And then I will, I'll notarize it. It will be filed with the city clerk's office. If you have any questions, staff can always get you a copy of it. Thanks to you everyone for your time. Hopefully that was less painful than administering the whole oath like we had last time.
I did. I was like, how far is he gonna go?
Give it a second while staff takes care of some technical issues. I did have, so right below that graphics, the wood fencing?
Yes.
Says six foot high board on board, get all that, no problem with that. One of the things we typically see is what defines rear yard privacy fence versus front yard. The commission typically has said back behind the first window, penetration on the building.
Okay.
And it's six feet from the public way as opposed to six feet from the yard side. We've seen some locations where the yard's up high, so you take the fence six feet plus your three, four, five, six feet of grade change from the sidewalk and now you got a fence 10 feet in the air. So that's been a sticking point recently.
Yeah, yeah.
So I'm not sure if that's a clarification for the holistic thing or if that would be more of a German village clarification.
Um, I know we did a clarification for the dog-eared fencing and I think if you all have typically been reviewing fencing with that stipulation, we're always happy to add asterisks to make sure it's tailor-made for a specific district. Even if it's common, you know, we have the asterisk there. So if you send me some specific language, Anthony, if you guys want to brainstorm together, I'm happy to add that to the asterisk. You know, and my, my suggestion would be if this could be approved on the conditions of, you know, adding that language to the asterisk for fencing and then making sure that attachment styles, you know, that language surrounding attachment styles, if you want to move that into motion, we could edit the list to tailor it a little bit. That's just a suggestion.
I do appreciate on the second page, the painting item about existing painted brick, choosing colors to match it as a painting. That was a big to-do application not too far in the past, so.
Oh, good, yeah.
Appreciate that.
Absolutely.
I had a question regarding tree removal.
Okay.
And it, it doesn't state anything about conditions for replacement.
Let's see here. Do you know what page that's on?
It was in white.
Oh, in white. Oh, so that was just an item that was unchanged and we just carried over.
Yep.
So your existing list says removal of trees with a 12-inch caliper or less. And so we just kind of kept it.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Yeah, um, so your thought is to mandate that a tree be replaced when a tree is removed or?
A tree, an approved tree.
An approved tree, yeah, right.
Because what we're seeing a lot of times is like we're losing the shade trees.
Yeah.
And then they're wanting to, in many instances, the proposed tree is much smaller. It's a smaller ornamental tree. It's a tree that doesn't really contribute to shade or
Yeah.
Have the same sort of environmental value.
Right, um, and all new trees come before you all, correct? Or I know landscaping is a staff approval item. I'm just trying to think about the mechanics of, of that in terms of coming. I think that'd be a larger conversation I'd have to have with management versus saying, you know, sure. But that's a discussion I'd have to have on that.
I think right now it's, it's like for like with, with our current list. So I personally would not recommend holding up approval of anything based upon something that's already as stated in our list. If you want to change it somehow, I think that's something you can do.
Go forward. Yeah. I like on the mitigation systems, AC generation stuff.
Oh, the radon?
Public way.
Yeah. Can you say that one more time?
Radiation mitigation systems and the AC units and generated diego screening and stuff.
Yes.
I think that's all fine. I would just say not seen from the public way.
Okay, what do we have here? Exhaust piping, SUV painted to match.
Near, near home.
And we have it, oh, oh, near rear, okay. And so, so screened from the right of ways?
Public right, public, public ways. So it's not seen from the public way.
Ah.
You do that on corner lot though. That's, you gotta figure it out.
Yeah, it can be a little tricky.
Especially the radon. You gotta figure it out.
Would like a bush be next to it? Is that what you're saying? Like maybe there's some plantings around it or something to screen it a little bit?
Yeah, basically, yeah. But certainly not the front. We got a couple in front yard. That's got to stop.
Yeah, or we have sidewalk adjacent to the building. And the radon, you know, was proposed to come out on that side of the foundation.
So I think what the commissioners are really getting towards fundamentally is saying, saying the rear of the house or the back third of the house. If it is, if it is a corner lot, that side public way.
Right.
The side of the house.
That's tricky, yeah.
On the other side.
Other side.
Right, right. Um, okay, maybe we could say near or at reared of, rear of home shielded from view of the right of way, something like that.
Or just not on a right of way side of the property.
Oh, that's a better, okay. Not fronting an elevation on the right of way, something like that.
Yeah. Right away elevation, yeah. I had a question about your sheds.
Yes.
Does this apply to prefab and/or custom or one or the other or?
We don't have any specifics surrounding that, but we do have specifics on what material it can be.
Yeah. Because it doesn't make any difference.
Yeah, it's more about like what's the material at the end of the day and is it a high-quality material? This is kind of how we were assessing.
That would apply to both.
Right, right. I don't care how it's made. I just want to know what it's made out of, kind of a thing, so.
So parking facilities, bicycle parking.
Yes.
So you say located to avoid potential conflict. I think it should be just avoid potential conflict, just avoid conflict.
Okay, so those are directly copied from the Department of Public Service who has ultimate approval on, on bicycle parking.
Yeah.
And that is the language that they use. So we, we're mirroring the Department of Public Service with those items.
So how do we get them to change their?
That's a separate conversation for a separate day. Maybe by a separate individual that's not me.
So some of that name.
Yeah.
Because I, I think the word potential is, is not, not there. Oh, yeah, it was potentially not going to happen, but it did happen. I'm sorry. And I'm not moving my bicycle back.
Yeah, and I don't, and I don't know how they came to that language or how long their language has been in place, but, you know, since.
Instructively exempting.
Right.
Oh, on the roofing section with gutters and downspouts, specifically gutters, states that like kind material and style perfectly facial. I'm assuming that that's getting to the idea of your raft tails are vertically cut. It's a box. It's perpendicularly cut up so at an angle. It's a, it's a half round. That's what we're getting to in that language.
Yeah, yeah.
Parking facilities, existing parking without landscaping, screening includes metal fencing, excludes chain link, wood fencing and landscaping in combination, blah blah. I don't see us providing, allowing metal fencing that's with appropriate opacity in the village.
I would think that our fencing guidelines would add to that.
This is saying what they can approve. This is, yeah, they can approve metal fencing that provides the capacity, but still has to meet the guidelines required. I think this overrides that.
No, it does not.
Okay, so then they can approve metal fencing that.
Does it move the guidelines?
So all of the items on this list have to also meet the guidelines for the specific area.
The only other last thing I had was regarding windows.
Yeah.
Repair replacement of skylights with new low-profile skylight with no damage to historic materials and placement avoiding view shed from right of way. All good. Submission of placement drawings and blah blah. We have a thing where we don't allow skylights on heritage slate roofs.
Yes, this is, so this is just for the repair or replacement of existing skylights.
What's ever there.
A new skylight would need to come before you all. Yeah, we don't want to be.
We're good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Double check.
No, that's totally, I understand. It's, it's a lot of information to take in and digest and it's all very deep.
I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Got one more on the, on the siding, the last bullet point for artificial siding.
What, um, where?
Third page.
Okay.
Uh, one, two, three, four, fifth one from the bottom.
Okay, I'm with you.
So removal, removal of artificial slash nonhistoric siding, repair original siding. becoming the last bullet point, repair replacement of modern siding materials to match existing on nonhistoric structures additions.
Mm-hmm.
My concern is that could be read to say, I've got a nonhistoric addition with new siding, I want to change my principal structure siding to match that. Just reads odd to me.
Hmm, okay, that's not what we would, that's not what we want for that. Um, repair replacement of modern siding to match.
So another one would be if you have a, a principal structure that maybe at some point in time they put vinyl siding on in the past, and now they're saying, well, that's not appropriate siding, and now we want to put new modern siding on that principal structure, even though it wouldn't be appropriate for the principal structure of the purpose.
Mm-hmm.
So perpetuating an ill uh into the future versus correcting it to be appropriate.
So only on nonhistoric structures and additions?
Yeah.
So help?
Yeah, if it's, if it's a non, it's a nonhistoric material on an original structure, it should come to the commission regardless.
Mm-hmm, I see what you're saying.
It's a nonoriginal addition, then it's a different, different case.
Okay, so maybe that would be an item that should be deleted, kind of? Is that where you're leaning, or? Repair replacement of modern siding materials to match existing with nonhistoric structures flash additions.
I think this is such a touchy item that probably should be.
I've got no problem with removing nonoriginal siding and repairing the original stair underneath. I've got no problem with repairing the historic.
Yeah.
It's just that, that third bullet point.
Yeah.
What about, I, and this is just from my own learning, what if someone has um like a house and there's, you know, it's obviously modern siding that wasn't there originally, and they need to repair, replace part of it? Is, what happens then, or?
It's how extensive it is.
Okay.
And, and it's still, we've always, we've always had that conversation with the applicant.
Yeah.
Um, to understand how extensive it is, what it is, and would another solution be more appropriate?
Hmm, okay.
So we have that conversation.
Okay.
Which allows that conversation.
Yeah, yeah, so it's very specific to the home and case-by-case.
My God, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
What's happened in the past?
I can see that.
What's happened in the past, you might have a vinyl siding that's put on in the eighties. That vinyl sign is no longer made, or the profile, the, the material, the texture is different.
Right.
Can't match it exactly like-for-like because it's an artificial material.
Right.
Now you're stuck with, now I got this one odd ball strip that just doesn't look like the rest. You've, you damaged the fabric of the building, is having a, it's, it's not appropriate overall. Is it better or worse to have even more not appropriate sticking out and calling attention to it?
Got it, yeah, okay.
An example of that was we had a property on Pearl Street, it's aluminum or vinyl. It had enough damage on one side, but the other side's ruined. We let them replace it with new material on the one whole side and let them keep the rest.
Ah.
Just to solve the problem.
Uh huh, got it, okay. That makes sense to me, so maybe that would be one that we would remove. Um, and of course, you know, we're going to HRC, VBC, IVC as well, so.
So I'm okay with, with that item with striking that third bullet point, yeah.
Okay.
If it's rewarded, happy that I take rewarding input.
Okay. Um, would you be open to that being a GVC-specific item, like those asterisks that we had talked about?
Sure.
Okay, great. We love asterisks, so anything we can do to tailor it a little bit as well?
I gotta back up. So what would that ask for? What?
Um, it would say uh asterisk does not apply in GVC.
Okay.
So if I'm HRC, I'm like, okay, I can do it theoretically.
Not GVC applicable?
Correct, correct.
Aside from that, I'm generally comfortable with everything else there. I know.
Okay.
The, the neighborhood will, will appreciate the uh sidewalk language.
Yeah.
They could work towards trying to find a smoother path to get sidewalk replacement in this. This specifically allows replacing concrete sidewalks, asphalt sidewalks with brick without cutting the commission, which makes it smoother, which we're.
Yes, and, and believe me, we, you know, over the past year, we've had, we've called them like workshopping meetings or wordsmithing. You know, how, if you were the member of the public, how would you interpret this or read this? So um, you know, we're like, we could do this forever, and it still wouldn't be perfect. Uh, it's like we're trying to publish a book and.
Yeah.
You know, so um, can I relay back what I've heard today?
Sure.
Just to make sure, okay. So on page one, we talked about banners and how they're attached, and noting that they need to be attached in the um mortar versus into the brick. We don't want any damage to the brick. Um, could that be a German village asterisk as well, if need be?
It's up to you, yeah.
Okay, okay, I'm just want to clarify, all right? And then on page two, we talked about um the mechanical, so radon, you know, generators, that type of thing. And we have the asterisk for German village to not front on an elevation um that is along a right-of-way. And that, and that's helpful because that alleviates the trick with those corner lots.
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
So you do.
And then on the last page, um, I'm sending you a contact information for public service. We said, of course, and then we're going to strike that third bullet point from siding uh when we're replacing, you know, for replacing the, like, for like modern siding on a nonhistoric structure. So we'll do the asterisk that, that wouldn't apply for German village. Did I capture everything?
So I, I think on the hanging sign, we also talked about the mountain language that had been existing, transferred back over into the.
Oh, yeah, let's see here.
New list.
Yes, the attachment.
Oh, here, I, I see uh atta, I'm going to read it.
Yep.
Attached through mortar joint slash placement is not to destroy or obscure significant features slash illumin, oh, that's illumination.
And the illumination is already picked up in the new language, is that the one?
Yeah, yeah, okay, so it's that part there.
That part.
So I'll just copy that.
Yep, that would be great.
Okay.
And he, so the one thing I was struck from that hanging signage is the graphics to include business name, logo, function, horse street address. I'm always a little squirrely when it comes to kidding.
Can I speak to that?
Yes, please.
The reason why we removed that was there is a Supreme Court case um that basically said that we, as city planners, um, and the powers that be can't regulate the content of a sign um to protect freedom of speech. We can only regulate the placement and size of signs. And so we, in, you know, doing these process improvements, whether it be standards or codes or these types of lists, any place where it talks about logos, colors on signs, we're trying to eliminate that to be sensitive to that Supreme Court case decision. So that's why I didn't see that copied.
I think that's what makes the size more, even more important to it.
Correct, correct.
Something to put out on the seat sign, and you, you can object.
A little different graph, potentially.
For speech?
Yep. Remember that court case, that's part of our planning, planning legal force.
So we had something about fencing, that's two that you had.
Yeah, my piece was fencing, like the six, the six-feet-tall fencing should be from the public way. Adjacent to the wall.
Six feet.
Public way three.
Height measured from.
Yeah, public way.
Regardless of the elevation of the backside fence.
I like six, I heard six feet from height measured from the public way.
Yes.
I like that a lot.
Yeah, grade of the public way.
I'm sorry?
Grade, elevation, grade.
From the grade of the public?
The public way.
Okay.
So like for clarification, if your, your side yard is sloping upwards, it's six feet long entire slope, you gotta step it versus taking one-six foot running that clear out.
Right, right. Yeah, that can be an asterisk, definitely.
Any other questions or feedback? Okay. So with that, uh, is there a motion to approve the common staff approval list with those clarifications as discussed?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I move to approve or ratify, I don't which is which, um, the comments, the new common staff approval list with the modifications, which I'm going to say are captured in the video recording of this meeting.
I can type them out, too, and see if that helps.
I'm going for the technical approach.
I appreciate that.
Is there a second on the motion?
Second.
Any questions on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Eyes have it, the motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Very hard work, I appreciate it.
Much appreciated, thank you.
Right, now moving on to the certificates of appropriateness, uh, item one, GV dash two-four dash zero-four dash zero-one-four, five-three-three, South Third Street. Applicant for five-three-three, South Third Street.
Please, at the business meeting, it was.
Yes, yes.
But we have the takeout.
Yeah, yep, yep, yeah, yeah, all right. Um, can you read it in?
Absolutely.
Good.
Um, I just wanted to say that I think the variant was, the one that was, was going to be handled, sorted now.
Sure. You should microphone on over there?
I didn't think so, yes.
Just about to hear you a little bit.
Um, this is your request for action for variant recommendation from um thirty-three-seventy-six, that's zero-four, residential complex identification signs to allow projecting signs being installed in five-thousand-and-eight, South Third Street. This section of the Garlicks Code regulates residential complex identification signs and only contemplates around the whole signage. The developer seeks approval to install a projecting sign set. The sign is approved by GVC in January as GV dash two-four dash zero-one dash zero-one-seven. Um, staff analysis, the annual business meeting, the commission confirms that they could take action on this application of the hearing without the applicant present and had no requested information from the applicant. At the January twenty-twenty-four hearing, the commission recommended the sign be signed. Um, HBO staff have identified no concerns with allowing the variants for the projecting sign. So staff recommendation is staff recommends the commission recommend the variants as suggested. And the basis for this recommendation is um the proposed work is somewhat consistent with the German village guidelines on zoning variances.
Great. Any questions, comments in the commission?
Nope.
Yep. Mr. Chairman, on item GV twenty-four oh-four dash zero-one-four, five-three-three, South, South Third Street, I move to recommend the zoning variances. There's zoning variances.
Second.
Any questions on the motion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Eyes have it, we actually recommend it. Uh, on to item number two, GV dash two-four dash zero-three dash zero-one-three, five-one-nine, South Fourth Street. And once you're settled, if you'll raise your right hand, please. This is where I tell the truth, all truth, live truth.
I do.
You do?
Will lean into outdoor spaces than.
Thank you very much.
So they continue to request for action for exterior building alterations and landscaping. Uh, the proposed work description is to install wooden window boxes with lances and bolted by the horizontal trans elevation and not elevation. The window boxes will be attached to the kitchen surrounders and the walls between bricks. For the landscaping and, and landscaping and front yard. Um, the proposed list to relay the same brick sidewalk and lining map pen. Um, trim the existing trees, install a raised brick edge approximately three to four inches from the planted fence. Install an empty front door, boxwoods, cover the suspended site plan. And in the rear side yard, to remove the existing iron gate in the north side yard and install new iron gates. Remove the existing red wall plate, stone steps in the side yard and replace with an Indiana limestone walkway and a cat pant set on aggregate base. Install new freestanding water curtains in the side yard. Relay the existing brick in the reading yard behind the rear yard gate. Install a six-foot-tall wooden branch cement fence for the suspended site plan. Install new wrought iron rear gate. Construct a new forty-eight-inch-tall fence with removable panel and a leading sequence unit. Reset the existing limestone step. Repave or replace the existing asphalt parking area. Install lances and other landscaping, cover the suspended site plan. Um, staff analysis, the following is from the now-approved March twenty-two, four, GVC hearing minutes. The commission comments. Um, the commission concluded that all current elements must be within the front line from five nineteen to fourth street, which is the application address. The applicant should revise the materials and the site plan to pull the fence within the front line and remove all elements outside of the front line. The names existing fence plants must be applied to all by the neighbor or a party authorized by the neighbor. The window boxes should be installed through masonry joints. The commission cautions against window boxes against starting with radius window boxes with a lamp and laws to be held against the brick, which may negatively impact the brick and mortar due to the finished wall segments. However, the commission did not identify a reason to not approve the window boxes. Some commissioners complained that any replacement iron fence should be brought behind the first window is to be kept at the tall height. Other commissioners found that the existing iron fence should remain and slash or any replacement fence could be in the same location. If the fence is removed, all commissioners confirm that patching the masonry will be required, and approval may be needed from the neighbor as the fence attaches to that front. The commission found that the new proposed iron gate was not appropriate in style due to the spacing of the spindles and the framing of the gate. The commission discussed the rhythm of the street side. Um, what is the gate on the other side of five nineteen like, and does the new proposed gate match the rhythm of the style? The AC condenser should be screened from both sides, including from the gate's perspective. After the March hearing, the applicant revised that design to move the gate back from the front yard, provides a new proposed gate. At the, at the annual business meeting, the commission requested the applicant confirm we intend to resurface the parking lot, requested the applicant remove items appearing outside of the front line, and requested the applicant contact public service in regards to the front yard and save it within the front. HBO staff checked the file, located to some drawing from nineteen seventy-one, showing a brick and an iron fence between five seventeen and five nineteen, South Fourth Street. The existing gate does not match the sample drawing, and there are no other COAs for the gate on file. But the approved gate needs to be five feet in height. There are also nonhistoric photos of the gate in files for five seventeen or five nineteen, South Fourth Street. Staff recommendation is staff recommends that the commission continue the application to allow the applicant time to revise the design to conform with City Code and the German village guidelines. And the basis for this recommendation is City Code section thirty-one sixteen to eleven, standards for alteration, numbers one, two, three, four, five, nine, ten, eleven, and twelve. City Code section thirty-one sixteen to thirteen, standards for site improvements, A and B, and the German village guidelines on walk sidewalks, driveways, patios, parking lots, one, two, four, and five.
Are they on the air?
No.
Questions, comments, and commission?
Does the demolition of the North Neighbor's fence in this go forward?
No.
It's, it looks like it is because it's dotted.
Yes, it's uh shown as dashed, um, just to graphically be uh muted. I, I don't, uh, we were not able to come to, to get a hold of them as of today um to discuss that, if they're going to take out, take it out or not. That's, that's all we're at.
Okay, so that, that leads to my next question, because at the March twenty-sixth meeting, we request a letter of agreement with North Neighbor regarding the conditions of the existing and new fences. That should be part of this application we have.
Well, we moved the fence on to uh, you know, uh, the property. If you remember, the fence was actually on their property, so we just bumped up the project.
Yeah, I still think we want a letter because we want to know what they intend to do with their fence, because now we have a space between two fences that keep being maintained.
Right.
I would state that if it's on their property.
I think there should be discussion between the two neighbors, and we should have a letter about that discussion.
Disagree that there should be one, but is that within purview of the commission to dictate approval based upon that?
I would say that this fence, the installation of this fence is, is affecting the main capability of the neighbor to maintain their fence. There should be some resolution between the two, said two fences.
If, if the fence, in this situation, if the fence can't be maintained, it probably can't be constructed as designed. In this situation, if the fence can't be maintained, it probably can't be constructed as designed. In which case, repeat the first place.
That's a good point. The verticals are on the outside of the rails and now they're going to get to them in order to, so it's not constructable.
It's not constructable.
Yeah, so down the scene, removing a fence that's not constructable.
Well, I mean, is it possible to, you know, get that letter? And have a, I guess, self-committee to approve just that specific item?
We could stipulate what the letter should dictate from planning staff that approve of it.
Okay, that's, that makes sense.
But I think there needs to be some understanding between this property owner and the other owner.
Just makes sense.
The future of the two fences are and how they're going to mutually maintain them or not.
I get it, yeah.
Okay.
We attempted to contact.
Yeah, I get it.
Sorry.
Awesome.
There is, there is one post that's going on the neighbor's property. Too, right?
Yes.
We need to turn it.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so that's, which is a typical condition.
Yeah.
There's some discussion about what the front gate materials were and there was something about half inch by three quarter inch bar or rounds discussed at the last meeting.
We.
I'm not familiar with Fortran's design number, so I'm not sure what.
Oh, sorry, yeah. It'd be, yeah, standard fort and forty-nine gate would react to most of what you see in the village.
And what is that?
It's typically a rod.
Is it rod?
Solid.
Solid rod, yeah.
Round.
Round, yes.
And then the crossbars are usually a channel, I think. The cross members are usually a channel.
My channel.
Okay.
The same design as across the street. This is to react to the property directly across the street, so.
There's some question about. Doing an investigation of a race planner in the right way with the city? Just brought up last month.
We. Well, the, the, the street, the, where the tree lawn location that we leveled, we, we. Leveld the brick, so that's not raised anymore, but there is a raised brick edge along the foundation of the, the building. That would be three inches above grade.
Okay, so the, the planner bit out front does not have a raised edge in?
No.
Okay. I think that's the one that they were concerned about.
Yeah.
My other last question is elevations and sections of the AC enclosure, we have no idea what that looks like.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, the, the, the fence around the air conditioning unit will react to the six foot privacy fence detail. But will be forty-eight inches tall versus six feet tall.
So it's same style as the privacy fence?
That's right.
It's shorter.
That privacy fence is, it can, it looks like it's either using a post at the corner that's been framed out or it's a really big post.
Yeah, it's a treated post with.
Stone.
With cedar clad.
Okay.
To, so that it's treated. And they'll.
Because this doesn't say what size the posts are. On the drawing.
Um. There is a section, maybe.
Oh, they are six by six.
Yeah.
Framed, but it's, this is six and a half, so that must be one.
Yeah, because, you know, nominal is five and a half.
Yeah.
So, yeah, the three quarters.
So when you go down to the air conditioning, is that going to be the same post size or would you go to a smaller one?
I was thinking it'd be the same, there's a photograph on the drawing saying rear fence example. It's not showing up there.
Yeah, it seems like when that goes all around that AC unit, those posts are going to look really large. When it's forty-eight inches tall and. You know.
This fence, this fence.
Forty-eight inches.
Fence is in this picture is actually our design and it is forty-eight inches tall.
Is it?
Yeah. I don't know if that helps. If the picture helps, but.
I think if they want them six by six, to me, that's okay.
Yeah, it's a four by four, okay, that's okay.
Right at the front end of a car, yeah.
My only comment, I'm not going to let this hold up the application, do you see the fountain shown across property line? Not atypical for, for the village in between properties, so I'm not going to hold it up, just know that if the, maybe there's a problem now.
Yeah.
But it is.
Nice thing is, nice thing is it, it's basically a piece of furniture, it's a superficial installation.
Okay.
Any other questions or? Here, done, is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman on item, if I can bring it up. Item GV twenty-four oh three oh thirteen, five nineteen, South Fourth Street, I move to approve. As the applicant agreed to amend. That there will be a letter provided on an agreement between this owner and the North property owner on the. Status of the two fences, the condition of maintaining the two fences, and the constructability of this new fence. The privacy, or the fence around the AC unit will be a forty-eight inch high fence of the same. Design as the privacy fence. Certification that the Fortner design is a round rod vertical and a channel horizontal. I miss anything? And the fountain is not a permanent installation, but a temporary installation that is shown on the owner's. A adjacent owner's property, that should be verified that that's okay, sure it is, but.
Okay. Any questions or is there a second?
Second.
Second, any questions on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Eyes have it, the motion passes. Very much. Moving ahead to item number three, GV dash two four dash zero three dash zero one four, Bravo, one six five dash Le Avenue. Let the record show the applicant is still on the record. Read it.
This is a, nothing continued for best action, but landscape. In the front yard to install a new retaining wall and curb as submitted site plan. While the app previously approved by JBC in twenty nineteen. Remove the existing stone patio and restore the yard space. In the rear yard, to install a new blue stone patio, use some stones of various sizes. Stall built-in gravel area. And submit in site plan and elevation drawings. So install a built-in fountain trellis as submitted site plan and elevation drawings. Remove gravel parking area, store the lawn, and install a cold concrete retaining walls per submitted site plan. The following is taken from the now approved March twenty twenty-four JBC hearing minutes. The commission comments, but other commissions are very concerned as the fence height of the sidewalk grade when the fence is placed on top or behind the proposed retaining wall. The fence height creates mounting issue between the applicant property and the neighbor's. It is the commission's precedent that some law properties on the street with retaining walls were not allowed to construct fences on the retaining walls. This is consistent with the German Village Guidelines, Fence and Wall Recommendation with seven. Keep high fencing at the rear of the property with low fences near the fence of the lot, avoid obscure views of the building. Consider holding the fence back somewhat from the street or sidewalk. And providing a small part of the strip to stop the visual impact of the fence. A maximum fence height, three to four feet on the streets, most appropriate. Rear yard fences should be a maximum of six feet high. Two of the six, commission is intended to repay with facts and landscaping as proposed. After the March hearing, the applicant removed the fence from the design. At the April business meeting, the commission requested the applicant clarify details of the fences and have rail on the existing front stairs. The applicant submitted all of their requested materials and additional details, the retaining wall was approved eighteen inches. Staff recommendation is staff recommends approval with any and all qualifications to be submitted to HBO staff for review and approval prior to the certificate. And the basis for this recommendation is City Code section thirty-one sixteen to thirteen, standard for site improvements, A and B. The German Village Guidelines on walks, sidewalks, driveways, patios, and parking lots. Numbers one, two, four, five. And the German Village Guidelines on fences and walls, numbers two, three, five.
Anything else to add?
No.
Questions, comments, and commission? I always make one note, I just happened to be doing some research for a presentation I'm giving. Pulled up the National Register nomination for German Village and this property is on the nomination list. So it's got nineteen seventy-four photo on there just for the owner's knowledge. It's one of the, I'll say, the few photos that got the district nominated.
Oh.
Approved, yeah. Piece trivia, I thought I was going to be stuck in the application, but didn't make it, so.
So, Mr. Chairman, I move on GV twenty-four oh three oh fourteen, B one sixty-five dash floor avenue, to approve as submitted.
Second.
Any questions on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Eyes have it, motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you.
On item number four, GV dash two four dash zero three dash zero one two, six one two, Mohawk Street. You're accused myself, please. I thought the record showed that Commissioner Steele has refused on this application. And once you're all settled, you raise your right hand, you just want to tell the truth, the whole truth, live the truth.
Do it.
And your name?
Josh Matziger, CJ Restoration.
Very much.
This is a request for exterior building alteration. To replace a slave roof. To remove the existing slave roof, replace with Eco Star Empire Slate, not with edge slate. With a seven inch stove. The metal rail will either tin it or break. The Eco Star Empire Slate is an artificial slate material made of twenty-five percent recycled plastics. Eco Star Empire Slate is installed on the fourth group, six twelve mark, six twelve. The COA number for that is GV dash twenty-two dash zero eight, three zero four two. And this was not a test case. And having put a test cases at two twenty, Singapore Street, which is GV dash one eight dash seven eight dash seven four one. Two twenty-five, Lee Street, which is GV dash nineteen dash zero eight dash zero two four. And two forty-five, Jackson Street, which is GV dash two zero dash zero nine dash seven seven. Staff analysis of the March hearing, the application was continued because the applicant's absence. At the April business meeting, the commission requested the applicant confirm the color, the color spectrum proposed. The applicant confirmed that the post slate for the primary group will match the existing approved porch. Which is free port federal and a wide spectrum lens to match the existing slate roof as closely as possible. HBO staff have added the minutes for the twenty eighteen approval. Two twenty East Singapore Street, have a COAs for the Eco Star Empire Slate at two twenty-five, Leo, two forty-five, Jackson, and six twelve, Mohawk. The quadrant of the six twelve, Mohawk, is also on that free port federal color spectrum. The staff recommendation is staff recommends to approve with any and all qualifications to be submitted to HBO staff for review and approval, prior to the certificate. And the basis for this recommendation is that the proposed work is somewhat consistent with City Code section thirty-one sixteen to eleven, standard for alteration. Numbers six, five. And eleven. And the German Village Guidelines, two thousand and five amendments and slate roof replacements. It's.
Anything else to add?
Absolutely.
Alright, any questions, comments, and commission?
No.
I think they have a letter from a roof contractor not doing the work, letter from the contractor doing the work, and also an engineer's report. I think it needs the spirit of our two, two contractor requirement, you know, one is doing the work, the engineer's letter offsets that. And the fact that we're going from slate to a synthetic slate as opposed to slate to asphalt, I think it also offsets that as well. Do appreciate the, the research to try to figure out what that proper mix is, for sure.
Absolutely.
If there are no questions. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, item number GV twenty-four oh three dash zero one twelve, six, six twelve, Mohawk Street. Move to approve the replacement of the existing slate roof as specified.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions on the motion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Against? Eyes have it, motion passes. Thank you much.
Thank you.
Alright, moving on to item number five. Yep, five. GV dash twenty-four dash oh four dash zero one five, forty-nine East Sycamore Street. You're just sworn in, you're good to go, but the record show the applicant is still sworn in.
They request for action for exterior building operations. The proposed web description is exterior building operations to the window siding and trim replacements. To replace the pine sopin on the rear left of a rail with light current pine plywood. Replace the pine wood lap siding on the rear left and right corners. Replace with boral to match the existing profile. Replace the wood trim on the rear of the elevation window, rear left, rear lower left windows. And the wood siding below the rear lower left windows with boral to match the existing profile. Paint all wood elements to match existing with the custom color provided. Replace four windows on rear addition, one on the second floor rear elevation. And three on the first floor east elevation with marble and cement double hull, one of the wall windows to be approved less than below avenue. The staff analysis is at the April business meeting, the commission requested the applicant clarify that the new windows will match the existing initial windows and the applicant submitted, submit a photo of the new boral next to the wood siding. The commission requested staff confirm the date of the second floor addition. The second floor addition was approved construction in nineteen ninety-three and issued a building permit in February of nineteen ninety-four. The stamp drawings are included with trellis packets. As the addition is not historic, HBO staff supports replacement of the siding. However, for continuity, HBO staff recommend the applicant use either wood for all replacement materials or replace the entire elevations with boral to ensure matching appearance. So the staff recommendation is staff recommends approval with any and all qualifications to be submitted to HBO staff for review and approval, prior to the post and get the full positions. And those conditions are that the applicant revise their proposal to use either wood for all replacement materials or replace the entire elevations with boral to ensure matching appearance. And the basis for this recommendation. Is City Code section thirty-one sixteen to eleven, standard for alteration, numbers one, two, three, four, five, six, ten, eleven, and twelve.
Anything else to add?
So.
Questions, comments, and commission?
No.
So, this is almost like for like except boral for wood.
Correct.
The only other thing is the rear window's wider.
What's that?
The rear window is wider?
Uh, taller. It's taller, or sorry, wider, yes.
So this isn't a same for same change in the design?
Not on that window.
Not on that one?
Just that window where.
It's that one.
We're posing to.
Yeah, it's not mentioned anywhere, there's no discussion about the fact that this window's wider.
Oh.
In, in anything that anybody's brought up, so I just want to make sure. That that is caught. It's a couple inches wider.
And the width is intentional, that wasn't a mismeasure, it's the homeowner wanted it wider.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's the point I'm making. Because it's been. Nobody caught that in previous conversations.
At the business meeting, my. My concern was the materiality change. If it truly is like for like.
If it truly is like for like, that's, that's one thing. Looking at the, the photos that were included, uh, on page nineteen and twenty. And I'm wondering what's being done from the wood having that rounded edge versus the boral having that nice hard angle. That lap, lap comes to the surface, that nice crisp edge versus there, there's going to be a visual difference, hundred percent.
Yeah, we can soften the edges with the boral. The nice thing about the product, it is something that can be tool. So we can do that if that would meet the criteria.
So this goes back to our approval list we've talked about of things that should be staffed, this is one of the reasons why we wouldn't do a nonhistoric material automatic approval on a
Yeah.
Historic structure. And, uh, did we identify when this addition was put on?
Yes.
Didn't pick that up at the, yeah, reading.
Gave. And the 1940?
I see, yep. Correct. Forty years, okay. I think if, if that edge is tooed, it's a more closely matched, I think that mitigates my issue.
So maybe in front of the wider window.
I don't.
I don't.
I don't. Oh, I don't either, but I just have not been discussed or even mentioned.
Real.
Yeah.
Right.
Uh, shame on HBO staff. Hell, I'm the always said that.
All right, uh, if there's no further questions, uh, is there a motion?
Sure. Mr. Chairman, on GV 2404-0 dash, or dash one, zero one five, 49 East Sycamore Street. I move to approve as submitted with the stipulation as, as amended by the applicant that the boral edge will be softened to match the existing wood hedge.
Is there a second?
Second.
We've got a second, any question for the motion? Always in favor?
Aye.
Yes? Eyes have it, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Clarifying.
Yes. Now the issue. All right, uh, item number six, GV dash two four dash zero four dash zero one six, 756 South Third Street. Applicant for 756 Third Street. Yes. If you're settled, if you're raising your right hand, you spread tell the truth, full truth, not the truth.
I do.
In your name?
Steve Herb with Urban Order Architecture.
This is a request for action, can you construction? And the proposed web description is a new rear addition. To construct a new one-story addition from the rear of the primary structure. Um, settled to a trend roof against existing, um, addition. Big old BGAF world. And on party board with white siding. Windows to be marble and ultimate double hull, G202, the approved window list. My staff analysis of all of the state information approved from the roof construction for AGC requirements. Commission comments, but the commission has suggested that the applicant provide the floor line, show what rooms have a foundation and confirms did not possess what is the purpose of the home. Commission has asked how the roof intersection will work to be the addition of my structure. Ask the applicant to revise what they are proposing on the elevation section. Um, applicant requested permission for selected establishments to cover the historic openings for the building. The commission agrees and therefore can work through the COA process with HBO staff. The applicant asked about the proposed door on the side of the building. Commission has indicated that the proposed door on the line was existing and what's the historic construction, including the original asset. The applicant did revise the design to the January 2023 hearing. The design now employed from moving portion of the existing addition and utilizing the addition as a connector between the primary structure and the addition. The existing door opening on the connector is to be retained instead of the opening being light as proposed last year. At the April Business Meeting, we have no requests for additional information. So the staff recommendation is, um, staff recommends to approve with any and all qualifications to be submitted to HBO staff for review and approval, price issuance of the certificate, following conditions. But the applicant selects new siding material upon the one. And the basis for this recommendation is City Code Section 3116 to 11, standard for alteration. Numbers one, two, three, four, five, six, 10, 11, and 12. The German Village Guidelines of additions, numbers one, two, three, four, and five.
Anything else to add?
Um. To address the siding issue, we would be happy to do a, a boral, uh, Dutch lap siding. Instead of the hardy
Board and batt.
Board and batt. And I think we probably addressed all of the other concerns.
Questions, comments, and mission?
Personally like board and batt.
I do too.
And I, I don't know, it seemed like the hardy, to me, the hardy seemed to be okay in the vertical orientation.
It's on the bad lot, yeah.
Yeah.
So I have no problem with either one of those. I have a different discussion, what I have with you. So, we've seen several of these original houses with a very low slope shed roof on the pass. And out of all due respect, we're trying to save those. Um, but we've had similar, some, some, uh, similar solutions of a rich roof on the addition. Which, to me, just doesn't look right.
I'm not following.
The fact that you've got, um, a peaked roof.
Okay.
Um, to me, I, I understand why you can't turn it on this one, that would be just absurd. But, and this is a, a matter of discussion. What if you've done a single shed roof? Across the whole back with a clear story on the side. For lighting. I'm just, I have to throw it up here.
Um.
Because you would have been more sympathetic to that low shed roof on the, the addition.
If we put another shed roof on this thing?
Current shed, and you're saying put a shed on the addition?
No, um.
Then you're jumping up with the clear story?
Yeah, and then same, different, maybe a different angle. But same slope as what the sheds got, or the, the single stories got. But you could get up high enough that you could have holster room. It's more contemporary, but I think it would fly.
And I think one of the reasons that we don't want to do that is because it's more contemporary and we're trying to make this just feel traditional and
I know, but this looks like a, I, I have no, and I understand that. This looks like a, a totally separate building that was slammed on the back of us, that's my problem.
And quite often the commission wants that.
Oh.
So.
No, I think it should look like an addition, not like a separate building that's linked on the back of it, so that's just that's where I'm at, but that's why I've got problems with those. Makes you know with a couple of other recent ones, it's just
Yeah.
Like, it's late, I agree, it's late in this game, in this application to be having.
So this
Serious.
This is the direction that we've gone with this client and presented to the commission a number of times.
Yeah, I'm just, but I'm, I'm
Yeah.
And I see, I'm just want to have the conversation of why some plan can not be appropriate.
It probably would be appropriate. That's just not the approach that we're taking in this case.
I got it, it's down the road, like, I get that, I'm not, I'm not, I'm just having this conversation, not
Yeah. And I would want
I'm interested in your viewpoint on, that's your opinion.
An hypothetical different front.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
All the same stuff.
Yeah. Say, say you started, would that be, would that be something worth considering if you'd started, wait, I mean, you started this?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, it's, it's a relatively small addition on the back of an addition. So we could get away with doing a roof. Um, I would, I would like to have more slope than the current.
I agree, yeah, I'm not, I think that's, yeah. My point, you've got the extenduated original building, then you've got this very utilitarian addition. Then all of a sudden we're doing this big splash on the back. And I, and I think it needs to more reflect, in my opinion, I might be asking you to go there, but this is just a little subtle discussion.
Yes.
It needs to reflect more of what the sheds doing than what the original building was doing. That's, that's just kind of where I'm getting at. Just
Yeah.
Architectural philosophy conversation.
Okay. Yeah, and I, I think we could be, we would be open to that in some other
Yeah, no, not, not, not there today. Right. So then in, in considering the form back you were talking about there, is it, is it a existing shed? New shed former valley, or the existing shed, new shed with a clear story kind of above that?
Yeah, I mean, same slope. Same directional slope.
Okay. Just to see what that would look like from
Butterfly.
Other way, if that would look weird.
I, well, in this case, you wouldn't see it. That's, that's why I'm okay with the baby. It's like you see
It's gonna stick out.
Man, I was like, yeah, just on the back.
Yeah.
And, and I have no, I have no problem in some of these houses. I know there was an issue up in Victorian Village about somebody, somebody in the architecture school put that fantastic, very modern addition on, uh, two-story Italian aid up there. Which I liked.
In Victorian or Italian?
Italian.
Yeah.
Um, and I, and I have no, yeah, and I have no problem with a peek at some of the stuff from the street, because it is a new addition on the back. We've always talked about that. I don't, I don't think it needs to, uh, yeah, that's just for matter. So I'm looking at this the other night, thinking hmm, still bothers me, got a couple other ones like this that are bothering me. Not asking you to change it, just want to interest
Yeah.
Understand what you're thinking.
Well, it's good to know that you would be open to that.
Ab- absolutely, yeah, cause I, yeah.
And, and we've done some things, um we did, well, it's not this, it's not this, but we've done some of those simple, just utilitarian shed pieces.
Okay. Just wanted to have the conversation.
And I was making a note for the record again, not this specific application, but you go back and look at your, uh, Google Street View back in oh nine to 2011. Looks like, uh, they changed from siding on the principal structure to a stucco condition. Uh, you can see a nice picture of where they're doing the exploratory to see what's underneath. Uh, and that's about that timeframe, oh nine to the love, 2011, that section of iron fence came down out front. So if the client's looking to replace that fence, go back to thousand nine photos of Google Street View, you'll see what fence was there continuing.
I'm worried. Just to I don't know what happened to that fence.
Just history note for you. Oh, no, I, I, I don't have an issue.
Oh, I don't either, I just wanted to have the conversation. Yeah. Uh. That's, yeah, I will say, on item GV 2404-016756 South Third Street. I move to approve as submitted.
Second.
Any questions on the motion? Always in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Yes? Eyes have it, motion passes.
Are you giving me the option of the board and batt and hardy or the horizontal boral?
Do you want the option or do you want the hardy? Board and batt?
Let's submit it's the hardy.
Yes, I know, I think the client would, might want the boral.
Okay, then I amend my motion to include the option of the boral. At the architect's advice to the owner.
And I would say that only caveat and clarification to that is that should be sent to staff to choose the appropriate, uh, exposure and style of that boral.
So the second has to be
Yeah.
So is there a second on the amendment?
Second.
Okay, seven at the end. Any questions on the amendment?
No.
Always in favor?
Uh, aye.
Stephen?
Thank you.
You. All right, moving on to item number seven, GV dash two four dash oh four dash zero one seven. Five four zero South Fifth Street. Applicant for five four zero South Fifth Street. Mark that, come back to it. Moving ahead to item number eight, uh, GV dash two four dash zero four dash zero one eight, seven six eight, South Third Street. And watch yourself, you raise your right hand, whoa. You spread tell the truth, the whole truth, not the truth.
I do.
Your name?
Uh, Julie Balook.
Much.
This is a request for action in construction. Um, this is the proposed one, one unit construction and addition and connector. To construct a one-story, twenty-seven foot, um, eight-inch connector. With hardy boards, wood plywood panel, membrane roof. Install two ghostlight lights on the north elevation. Two sets of fellow of the additional glass sliding door on the north elevation. Um, the windows will be pallet architect series with interior plastic exterior, one of one windows. Um, and to construct a new one-story addition with siding on round gutter. Pallet architect series, wood interior, plastic exterior, one of one windows. Um, an asphalt chisel roof to be JAF real sovereign in nickel gray. Paint all siding to be show and Williams anonymous. And paint all trim show and Williams in flat wool gray. Existing windows and steps to remain and the existing brick building in the, in the rear yard to remain. And for landscaping, top painting the existing brick wall and repair the light to light. And the windows act to remain. All other landscaping plans to be submitted to GDC for approval at later date. The staff analysis is at the April Business Meeting. The commission requested the applicant provides the site plan to gray, blur, or obscure the neighboring properties to clarify the scope of work for this location. The commission also noted that they appreciate the retention of the smokehouse. And note that the detached building is an important element that should be retained. HBO staff added the gray covering of the neighboring property to clarify the scope of work. Staff recommendation is staff recommends approval with any and all qualifications to be submitted to your HBO staff for review and approval. Prior to issuance of the certificate with the following conditions. Um, that the applicant selects new siding material from the hardy board. And the basis for this recommendation is City Code Section 3116 to 11, standard for alteration. Numbers one, two, three, four, five, nine, ten, eleven, twelve. City Code Section 3116 to 12, standard for new construction. A, C, and D. E, F, G, H, I, J, K, L, M, and N. And all that. And the German Village Guidelines of additions, numbers one, two, three, four, and five.
Uh, anything else to add?
Um, I just want to clarify, so the, the, the rearmost addition is wood siding. The hardy board right now is just in, on the connector and the board bat. Sure if that was clear. Um, you know, we're doing, we don't know exactly what the foundation is under. I'm calling it a pump house, I'm not sure, you know, exactly what that building was used for, but, um so, you know, the, the length of the addition and the parameters were based on discussions with my structural engineer as to how far away we needed to stay away from it. And that kind of situation, so still going to involve some careful digging. Um, we are going to come back in the future for a, um detached garage, but, um the same client is doing the project to the north in this project. And so we need the, um, access to the site from the alley to construct both of these additions. So that's why that's going to be submitted at a future date.
Is that, is there a basement under this, is that? Yeah, there is, that's what's
And
Gotcha.
Or for mechanicals and anything else?
Yeah.
The other basement is, the old basement is really difficult in excesses.
Yeah, we can.
We've talked about coming in and digging this from the south and, you know, limiting the over dig on the door side and all those kind of things, but we're so
Questions, comments?
I don't know.
Motion?
Think it would. Uh, Mr. Chairman, on Uh, Mr. Chairman on item GV twenty four oh four oh eighteen, seven sixty eight, South Third Street, I move to approve as submitted.
Second.
Question on motion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Yes? My favorite motion passes.
Thank you.
One comment at this meeting, um, might be conversation with the applicant about a preservation easement on that smokehouse. Case this changes, has in the future, it's one of those objects that are kind of in a hidden away area. It's wanting to get caught if somebody sees it from anywhere. Um, but it's, it's historic objects that are, they're seeing less and less and less in the village, so.
So a preservation easement, I'm not familiar with that.
It, it's an easement that's on the deed, that's maintained by landmarks will do it.
Okay.
And monitor it, and it just protects the, you cannot demolish the building without violating the deed.
Okay.
Property transfer and all that stuff.
Okay, all right.
I don't think it's expensive, but it's.
Oh, makes sense, I just haven't.
It's been preserved, so, yeah.
There could be some tax benefits to it if you look at it.
Okay, I'll, I'll mention that to her.
I'm going to try to do it from the outhouse. Just two by two.
Right, uh, moving ahead to the next item, item number nine, GV dash two four dash zero four dash zero one nine, thirty-three East Frankford Street. But yeah, but the record show the applicant is still sworn in, we got a new applicant, please raise your right hand. You swear to the truth, the whole truth, not the truth?
I do.
Your name?
Mike Tutco.
Thank you.
This is a request for action for exterior building alterations in construction and variance recommendation. And they propose one restriction, the exterior building alterations for the portion of the well. Is to enclose the east elevation porch. Um, with a new temporary request door with a front sill. Base transom windows from the approved windows list. The existing roof is to remain, it'll be exterior gray, plywood panels. And one existing window is being closed in the new one room. New construction of a garage to construct a new one car garage up in Franklin Street. Cut, cut, is an existing condition. Uh, the garage is being twisted feet by twelve feet. The main materials to include wood standing, wood siding, sorry, standing seam, metal roof. All round gutters and gelwood carriage tiles, stockwood, brushwood. The variant recommendation for the garage conditions. Uh, from thirty three twelve to eighteen D. Basis for confusing area to allow a lot of coverage of seventy seven point six eight percent and level of property of six. Thirty three, thirty two, that's a C, private garage. To allow the garage to be one point zero three feet from the east property line and low of the required three feet. Uh, variant recommendation of the existing additions. Thirty three, thirty two, that's one building line. To permit the existing building line on Franklin Street, um, seven feet and low of the required ten. Thirty three, thirty two, that's twenty six, minimum side yard. To allow the existing one foot side yard setback along the hill to remain at low of the required five feet. Thirty three, thirty two, that's twenty seven, rear yard. To permit the existing rear yard at ninety five four percent. On two hundred and eighty seven four square feet. And little bit required rear yard to five percent or five hundred and forty six seven five square feet. Thirty three, twenty one, that's zero five A two, vision clearance. To allow the existing height four point nine eight five feet, but the existing brick wall. To remain for vision clearance of zero feet. And thirty three, twenty one, zero five B one, vision clearance. To allow the existing vision clearance of zero feet for the corner of Franklin and Powell. Staff analysis, the following is taken from the now approved March twenty twenty four G B C hearing minutes. Um, the commission comments whether the commission is requested. And the applicant consider the heat of the hang of the garage that extends into the neighboring lot and recommend your use of leave. All round though, this would be appropriate with a fifteen point two. Commission has suggested can lights rather than two stances are needed below three porch. Commission found that the porch foundations appearing in condition and needs to see phone should be wrapped or replaced. All drawings should be coordinated and the hatching details, brickwork should be amended to include various bits. At the April business meeting, the commission noted that the panel configuration on the east and south elevation porch enclosure do not match. And recommended that the applicant revise their design so the panels on both elevations match. The applicant revised the drawings, the panels on both elevations, um, do match, but requested that the commission consider the first option submitted as well. Both drawings are included in the terms. Um, the staff recommendation, it staff recommends approval on either panel option. With any in all qualifications to be submitted to, to H B O staff for review. And approval prior to the issuance of the certificate. If the commission spots this sign, staff recommends the commission split the applications, recommend the variances and. And the staff recommend, um, the basis of the staff recommendation is city code section thirty one sixteen dot eleven, standard for alteration. One, two, three, four, five, nine, ten, eleven, and twelve. City code section thirty one sixteen dot twelve, standard for new construction. A, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, J, K, L, M, and N. And the German village guidelines on additions, one, two, three, four. The German village guidelines that be construction for lodges and our buildings. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirty, fourteen, fifteen.
With Sessom Street. Anything else to add?
Um, no, I don't think so. I would just, well, I just said majority of the variances are for the existing additions, which we, I think, discussed at the last meeting, so. Certainly clarify any of those people questions. But I did want to talk about the panel detail, I don't know if we're doing the variances first or the.
I think we'll just talk through what's proposed design wise and then.
Okay.
Just split, just split it variances and architectural.
Okay, so my only question was, um, so when this comment was first made about aligning the panels, I realized the, the low rail didn't align on two elevation, so I corrected that. Um, but, um, so we are interrupting the panels on the south elevation with transoms. Now, what I'm dealing with here, it's a little bit of a unique situation, is that we, we have the existing roof and the existing soffit. So I, I can't be flexible on the height. And when I continue that short panel in the alternate elevation, I just think it makes the door look really odd. So I think personally, architecturally, it looks better as originally submitted. I do think there's some historic precedent for interrupting panels with windows, like just on the top portion, I see it in historic houses in Bexley, in Arlington and German Village. So I, you know, when I look at the door and the proportion of the door, when, when you put that transom on that, um, I guess it would be the east elevation, I feel like it, it caused, calls attention to the fact that the door doesn't line up with the transoms like we would normally do. So that's why I'm suggesting we do the proposal. The original one.
So you, you got the top of the lower panel lined up?
Yeah.
But now the bottom doesn't line up.
Bottoms line up.
Now they don't.
They should.
Um, the bottom of the blazing line is at the floor level on the south elevation. And the bottom of the framing is at the floor elevation on the, floor elevation on the.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
East.
I think that's just because I lapped the trim over the concrete there.
Yeah, you're missing a lot.
Yeah, I see what you're saying, yeah.
At least, at least elevation is the correct.
Yeah, I think so too.
Yeah.
But I'm not sure, but anyways, that's right.
But.
So, so I still think the panels should line up. I think your transom, no matter what, is crazy.
Just.
I adore the fits, the whole thing.
I mean, well, he wanted to be able to use that wall for coats and things, but I suppose you could put something. He said, maybe, why aren't you just putting the whole window there?
Oh, so it'd be all the hanging stuff.
Yeah, now you could put a piece of furniture in front of it.
Well, I, and, 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 I mean, if the, if the east, is it east elevation is the back, am I right?
Uh, well, it kind of, the east elevation faces the garage, if we consider that.
So, I mean, that, that's glass, you want glass in there.
Oh, you're saying there.
Well, I'm done, I'm just, I'm, I'm asking, I'm not suggesting, is it, is it glass?
No, it's a panel right now.
It's a panel, okay, so what about the south elevation?
The south elevation just has two transoms up high.
Okay, okay, so I, I think two transoms up high, I think, I think the panels should relate, I, I still think that.
Okay.
Okay, I, I think it's crazy to have that little transom above the door.
There is no transom above the door.
Or whatever that little.
That's just a piece, that's just a little wood panel.
Okay, why don't you just get rid of that and make the door a little slight?
See what size door I can get, that's the.
We can have a maid.
Okay, now that, that solves the problem.
Yeah, that's, I'm trying to help you here.
Yeah, no, no, that's a good suggestion.
A, a door made in a millwork is not that different in price from buying one from one of the manufacturers, to be honest.
And then put the little tray, the second panel on that facade to them, is what you're doing. Okay, no, that's.
Basically, the, the staff elevation is the driver for having.
Yeah.
Two glass, transom top, and then two panels down below.
Yes.
And then on the east elevation, have the same rhythm, but it could all be opaque panels on the outside, what's your inside is up to you.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then get rid of that little sliver.
Get rid of the sliver.
No, that's, that makes sense.
Does that work?
Mm-hmm.
What's that you might want?
You don't get paid. Uh, I think the other question is, uh, so the garage, um, overhangs.
So what I, I, I did, because the overhangs on the house are vertical overhangs. So I went with the vertical overhang, and because of that, I showed the O G gutter. It also solves the problem, I, I don't have kevlar, it's not, I don't have a rated soffit, but you still get some dimension from the gutter. You know, to give it a little bit of detail, so I thought that addressed both the issues that we had.
More importantly, it's the gutter off the wall.
Only question, I'm not saying it's a problem for me necessarily. Looking at the garage portion, it seems a little tall.
I was thinking the same thing.
Compared to the garage adjacent to it, it feels like it's got an extra bit of a hat on it.
I mean, he, he did want a little bit of extra height.
Correct.
So I was trying to kind of mediate, I'll just say the neigh, I, I'll just say, I think the neighbor's garage looks a little short. If, for the scale of the house, I mean, it's a very tall house, I'd put that on there. So I was just thinking it, the scale of this garage kind of mediated between that garage and the cottage itself. Andy would like the extra height, so.
Just in my mind, I'm thinking, looking at the, looking at the east elevation of the, of the primary structure, you get more squatter, now we got the garage popping up, which is a different juxtaposition than what I typically expect for a garage in this contemporary house. Not saying it's going to hold up my boat, it just, it just feels a little weird visually, that's all.
Anthony, it's cute. The garage.
I'm not agreeing with you, Anthony, I had the same reaction, it seems tall, um, that it, it seems like the walls are tall to me.
Well.
On it, above the garage door and.
Yeah.
They are, but it's, it's, I'll argue, it's utilitarian to get some extra storage up there, my God, everybody needs extra storage.
And it's, and there's basically a six-foot brick wall in front.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And architecturally, it's, doesn't really go against anything. It's different, yeah.
Yeah, it, it is, it is.
Maybe it's just not having the, the breath feels hanging out to kind of offset it.
Part of you too, yeah, I mean, you're, everything you're saying is right.
I'm just a contractor, I just build stuff. Well, I, and I'm always forgetting the eaves, so the damn gutter is out away from the house, but. Okay. Any other questions or issues?
Uh, Mr. Chairman on GV twenty four oh four oh one nine, thirty-three East Frankford Street. I move to approve as amended by the applicant and the owner that the, you're going with the option where the panels on the east and south um, match. And that the door will go to full height.
For a second?
Second.
Any questions in the motion?
And, and the architect will fix the elevation bottom?
Yes.
So are you good with that? Okay. All right, uh, there are no other questions on the motion, uh, is there, we'll take the vote, all's in favor?
Aye.
Oh, scratch that. We can't vote, we can split it into variances and architecture. Take that off the table.
Take that off the table, uh, Mr. Chairman, I move to split oh nine GV twenty four oh four oh one nine. Thirty-three East Frankford Street into the variance, zoning variances, and the balance of the application.
So the variances are A, and the rest is B?
Um, the other way around. The architecture is A and the variances are B.
Okay.
Because that's the word we typically do in.
Is there a second?
Second.
Questions on the motion? All's in favor? Aye, against? Ayes have it?
Uh, Mr. Chairman on item GV twenty four oh four oh nineteen A, thirty-three East Frankford Street. The architectural segment of this application I moved to approve, I submitted with the panel system on east and south side matching and the door being pulled out.
And correcting of the lower portion.
And correcting the lower portion.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions on that motion? All's in favor? Aye, against? Ayes have it? And floor design?
Question, all these are existing conditions that we are.
Except for the block coverage.
Okay.
And the, whoops, the other one, um.
Distance property line for the garage?
Uh, the distance.
And what's the property line?
It's one point oh three feet from the, um, east property line, and we do have a letter from the neighbor saying it's okay.
And block coverage is deviating by fifty seven point six eight.
Thank you.
Just simply, any, any conversation about that? We had a conversation before about it, and it was basically, it's like you're adding a garage, the garage is about as small as you can get with footprints standpoint. So it's either you get this variance or you don't get a garage.
And replacing the paving where he partis.
And then it's a small garage.
Yeah, with putting the garage.
Chairman on GV twenty four oh four oh nineteen, thirty-three East Frankford Street, uh, B, I move to recommend these zoning variances.
Second.
Second. And first step, if we can put in that comment about mitigating expenses, why? But that's specifically for the, uh, block coverage, because it's typically more leaning to. All right, uh, any questions on the motion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye, against? Ayes have it, variances recommended.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Real quick, I want to check back, uh, item number seven, GV dash two four dash oh four dash zero one seven, this is five forty South Fifth Street here. All right. Forward and on ahead. We are on at ten, I believe? GV dash two four dash oh four dash zero two zero two five five, East Sycamore. Want you to go settle, you'll raise your right hands, one each. You swear to the truth, the whole truth, not the truth?
I do.
Your name?
Shay Badger.
Ian Rutledge?
I do.
We say a request for action for exterior building alteration. Propose one restriction for these exterior building operations and multiple replacements. To demolish the existing kitchen, porch, swash, rear, and structure with basic exhaust system. And structurally close and throw in the same size as the existing porch. Remove the kitchen door and rain house window, new siding to be wood or coral, I'm calling it smashing system. Foundation space with base C M U covers with window panelings match the existing porch etat. Roof to be a standing seam, metal roof. And existing porch steps to be reinstored. And to replace three existing windows with mark and ultimate from the approved windows list. New windows to be one over one to match the existing. Staff analysis, um, this application was previously reviewed virtually. Added management to be for G B C hearing. And the following is taken from me that now approved and it's from the hearing. The commission comments. Whether the commission requests additional information on the history of the addition? Does the addition appear in sample maps or L C A ways of file? For the applicant, the commission recommends taking photos behind porch scouting to provide context on the age of the addition. The ancient history of the addition will. The current design creates spacing issues within the fourth group on the second floor windows. There should be some space between these elements. Some commissioners expressing concern over a closing of the new window from the interior. Could the design be amended so that the window does not need to be enclosed? The window to be enclosed is a new window. The commission suggested the applicant coordinate all drawings and remotes to regular gutters. And I recommend that the drawings committed for an action be black and white so details can be made clearer. The commission noted that the porch is street facing. So there may be some additional issues. So there may be some structural issues with porch work. At the annual business meeting, the commission requested the applicant coordinate all drawings, including the height of the water table. Adding the downstairs to affirming door measurements. And the commission requested that HBO staff add the photos from last month's review to the current materials package. HBO staff have added their requested photos and the materials package. Staff recommendation, the staff recommends approval with any and all qualifications to be submitted to HBO staff for review and approval. Present issuance of. The basis for this recommendation is city code section thirty-one sixteen eleven standard for alteration. Numbers one, two, three, four, five, nine, ten, eleven and twelve. City code section thirty-one sixteen at twelve, standard for new construction. A, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, J, K, L, M, N. And the German Village Guidelines on additions. Numbers one, two, three.
Anything else to add?
Uh, we did do a little exploration on the existing porch, uh, the current decking is a, a composite. Um, we also have noted that there, uh, the porch has been rebuilt at, at one point. Um, no dates on the, uh, the lumber, uh, but did appear to be more, uh, newer than, I'd say nineties.
Questions, Thomas, the commission? I, I do have one or two. Overall, I think what, where you got to with the design, it's looking really good, um. The existing corner boards and window trim on the rest of the house, looking at the photos, appears to be metal or vinyl?
It is metal, yes.
Um, looking at the elevations you provided, you're talking about corner boards being wood painted. Um, seeing, especially on the, uh, page eleven of the application. Um, leaving a little bit of the siding to the left of this addition. Constructibility wise, um, wondering how that's gonna happen, what we're gonna do for siding on that new south elevation of this addition. Supposing putting salvage vinyl back onto it, suppose we put a different kind of siding on it?
Uh, we would probably salvage if it is aluminum, uh, so we should be able to even, if we have to paint it, uh, it is, uh, fully painted at the moment. So we could get, take aluminum that's, uh, matching and reinstall, reinstall new to match.
I've seen, looking at some of the photos that are closer, saw the texture, wasn't sure if it was aluminum or if it was the, so. It's aluminum, but leaves yourself, is that gonna be any for sure?
Yeah.
That's what I'm showing.
Just feel like it didn't get taken off.
Yeah.
So, um, is the plan to use, so salvage, reuse the aluminum horizontal siding uh, for the corner boards? Find wood to.
So I would not reuse the, uh, the, the corner boards of the aluminum corner, that will not be salvageable, uh, we'd probably go back to wood on that. If it needs to be wrapped and painted, we can do that.
Okay.
That's taken my head, no.
On that south elevation, uh, if you look back to page twelve. Twelve. Uh, so the main facade of the rear, the tallestest corner board on the right side. That has to tend to be self to, to remain.
That should stay in, in place, yes.
Okay. What, what I don't want to have see happening is that that has to come off for some, for whatever reason.
Sure.
If that comes off, the other one probably has to come.
That's wrong on the side.
I would say if that happens, he's in big trouble.
Yeah, that's gonna be a whole can of worms. So. Right, that's all I have. Any other questions? All right, if there's none, is there a motion?
Uh, Mr. Chairman on GV twenty-four oh four oh two zero, two fifty-five East Sycamore Street, I move to approve as submitted.
Second.
Any questions in the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Eyes have it, motion passes. Uh, on to item number eleven, GV dash two four dash oh four dash oh two one three six three Jack Street, Ethan Keedman, so, Richard Field, here's.
Four. Thank you.
You're welcome. Raise your right hand and swear and tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Name your name?
Mark Schindler.
Thank you, sir. Staff?
We pay action for exterior building alterations. Um, the proposed web description is exterior building alterations with window replacements. To replace eleven historic windows with new windows, making improved windows list. Staff analysis and for the. Um, HBO staff, please decide this item model eleven. HBO staff's evaluation of the windows, said they are historic windows, are in repairable condition. The windows show evidence for repair, continual care. Most apparently comparable and only a few have broken holes. The windows on the stair on the west elevation of the structure, um, does appear to have and a lower sash replacement as the sash is different with the other sash profiles. Applicant has concern about weatherizing the windows, typical ways of weatherizing. Historic windows would be storm windows. Um, adjusting the sash for better fit on the windows of gems. Adding additional weather stripping on the speakers over the gym. HBO staff wants for additional weatherizing to be existing. Construction does have existing storm windows and HBO staff wants for replacing the, excuse me, replacing the storm windows to allow for any requested weatherproofing and to affect historic windows. The basement windows appear to be replaceable windows and HBO staff have informed the applicant that the basement windows can be replaced via a HBO staff approval. Uh, at the annual business meeting, the commission had no request for information from the applicant. HBO staff have checked the file and there are no COAs for any work to the windows, basement structure, the existing addition or the proof of construction in need. Um, staff recommends the commission, the commission continue the application to allow the applicant to revise the application. HBO staff knows that the staff is one to repair and new store windows will be a staff applicable item. Um, the staff recommended conditions, the commission approves the, the, um, window replacement. HBO staff recommends a condition that the applicant submit the window, quote, drawings to HBO staff to review and approve, right, as the issues are listed. And the basis for this recommendation is city code section thirty-one sixteen eleven standard for alteration, one, two, three, four, five, nine, ten, eleven and twelve. And the German Village Guidelines on windows, one, two, and.
Thank you. Would you add or discuss or?
Well, I didn't know that was the answer, so, you know, I'm, uh, do I have a chance?
You're probably not.
Yeah.
To be honest with you, we, if HBO staff recommends that the windows are repairable or remediable, we will go along with that, but we, we would not approve removing historic material from a building that's totally against what we're here for.
Sure.
Um, there is a standard that if fifty percent of a frame or fifty percent of a sash or something like that is shot, rotted, gone, et cetera, then we would consider reflects.
So I, I, my argument is, y- you know, it's not a fit, what I have is not efficient. And, uh, in the winters, and I, I don't agree that replacing the storm windows is gonna make a difference. You know, some of the sashes are loose, they shake. Uh, and the cold air that comes in is pretty significant in the old part of the home. So I, you know, uh, I, I have concerns with that, you know, just from efficiencies and and, uh, you know, other issues that I already wrote in my, in my application.
Yeah, absolutely.
Uh, my other frustration, I, is, is, you know, I have homes all around me, y- y- there's two just recently that had their windows completely replaced. And it's hard for me to imagine that I'm the only one who can't replace windows.
They, they have made, may have already had replacement windows.
Yeah.
Which typically the new ones last only ten to fifteen years, is what we're being told. Without maintenance, they fall apart, and then part of it, it's the windows that you've got, the old wood is so much better than what the new wood is, material that's been going into the windows. Um, I, I, there are ways of, of tightening these windows up, and you're talking to somebody that's just done restoration on the zone windows personally. You can use a bronze spring mold, or spring, um, what do I say?
Goes in the track.
It goes in the track and it tightens the window up. Um, and that, you, and you got stops, you can take the stops out, you can take the intermediate stops out, there's a way of doing that, which gives you access to the windows to get those in. Um, and they staple in real easy, and you just cut a little longer than the sash. Um, and with this, with the room, what am I thinking of?
I, I don't know what the name is, I know what you're talking about.
Well, I'm sure that the people that I, if I had to restore the window, I'm sure they would know what, what needs to be done. Now, if, I know there are uh, four or five sashes that are, to me, are in disrepair. They look better on the inside than on the outside. Now, they didn't look at the outside, other than on the first floor. So y- what do I do in that situation? And if they, if they come to repair and say, well, Mark, I can't repair this, it's just gonna be a bunch of Bondo, you know, to, to make it, to make it look decent. Uh.
Two things, one is the, the sashes come out fortunately, you could take the sash out and have the deteriorated material replaced. Or you could have another sash built. Um, kind of yellow pine is my recommendation to you. Um, and that's not the kind of pine you're gonna get in a new window.
Yeah.
It's much heavier, much denser, it's still available, and have the sash made to match the existing one and put a popper back in.
Do we know there, uh, i- i- cause I was reading a lot of the details about it, it's, if it's original. You know, that's where the real sticking point is.
Yeah.
How do we know it's original?
There's, there's ways, the data trim is a giveaway, how it's mounted in the glass is a giveaway.
Okay.
Um, the nature of the glass is another one. Um, sometimes the number of, of, uh, panes that are in there and looking at that is, is another giveaway. How the window is constructed is a big giveaway.
Sure, yeah, I, I understand.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, if I could just have a conversation.
Yeah.
Kind of like you did earlier, just as a frustration as a homeowner. This is my home.
Yeah.
And I want it to be better, I, I love German Village, that's why we're down there, we love the historic element. But to me, windows are just one of those things that should be able to be replaced as long as it fits within the guidelines, so. And I have neighbors who, and then I can look at homes that are, that are, that are purchased and being rented that aren't cared for at all. And I, and I, and I see windows just rotting out and
I know.
And, you know, I'm trying to care for my home and, and i- i- in essence, I feel like it's a disadvantage, cause I'm trying to. And, uh,
It, it never is.
Without being able to improve the, you know, the, the efficiency of the home at the end of the day.
Yeah.
And the, and the look is, the, the, uh, storm windows are, they're, they're ugly and they're not historic.
And I, I certainly.
The aluminum ones.
I, I had taken my, this is off the record, I've taken my, um, vinyl plastic insert windows from nineteen seventy out, and I found the original frames underneath. And it took some work to redo the frames, okay? Had new sashes made for all of them, had the sashes put in, used the spring weather stripping, the, the spring weather stripping in it, did not get time to put um, new storms made, I'm gonna have, that was my goal, went through the winter with that. They are weatherproof, they don't leak, I really don't even think I need storms on them, they were not any colder than the insulated gas, glass windows in the back of the house. Just to give you, to my surprise.
Yeah. Well, I know that they're not efficient, cause I can feel the air coming in.
Yeah.
Even, and I know that's, but even just, because it's a single pane window, you know?
Single pane window is not that much better than, to be honest with you.
Yeah.
It's, it's, it's like one, it's a minimal, it's, it's the air infiltration is what you gotta get and the spring thresh, uh, spring weather stripping and some of the other stuff will tighten the window up and, and really fix it.
Okay.
Yeah, so that, that's kind of where we're where we're at.
It would have been, I wish I would have known that, I wouldn't have spent all my time, you know, coming in, you know, I appreciate the opportunity, but I mean, I'd rather than just say no, than I just know not to come in here, you know? So, um, cause as soon as it started, I thought, I don't have a chance, quite frankly. But I appreciate what you do.
Cool.
All right.
And if it helps, Landmarks is a good resource to reach out for people that do that, I don't know if you've got somebody in line, but they're a good resource for, for doing that kind of stuff, is.
Okay.
My name is, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We assume you're going to withdraw your application?
I'm sorry?
We assume you're going to withdraw your application?
Uh, yes.
Okay, for good.
Yeah.
Thank you, staff.
Still need an option?
No, we don't. We're not gonna continue. We're still let it go. Yeah. It's not even work.
Was there a piece by that, is that you wanna?
I got one of the coming questions, maybe.
Yeah.
So, we're out. So, okay, we'll take, take a shot.
Yeah.
You have the first one made up, that's, and then that one less than four hundred.
Are you here for, uh, I don't think that's me, five forty South Fitz?
There's one that got skipped.
Five forty South Fitz Street?
Nope.
Nope. I'm here for the, um.
The signage.
The signage. The brick line.
Okay.
At the end.
The state. All right, so, uh, we're on to one twelve? Yep, number twelve.
Eleven.
Okay. Uh, GV dash two four dash oh four dash zero two two, one thousand four Yaker Street. Uh, raise your right hand, just to tell the truth, full truth, not the truth?
I do.
And your name?
Brenda Parker. This is a special application for exterior building alterations and new construction. Um, the proposed web description is for porch demolition and construction of an addition. To demolish existing rear elevator ports. Sample mask is capable of rear porch since the one nineteen twenty-one. And to construct a new two-story addition at the rear of the house. At the annual business meeting, the commission requested the applicant provide demolition plan. The floor plan to show what the new openings will be created, will be additions. And clarify the proposed construction of the entry door on the addition. The commission also requested additional photos, documentation or information about the existing construction of the porch. HBO staff checked the files, found a nineteen ninety seven COA for rear porch rehabilitation, where the deck rail lengths, lances and pliers were approved for replacement. A two thousand and one COA for a building, for building a one terrace off of the rear porch. And a two thousand and two COA to replace the porch wall. Given the appearance of the lances work on the rear porch base in two thousand's photo, it does appear at least some of the nineteen ninety seven COA work was. Staff recommends the commission offer the same C fact that can be utilized by the applicant to further refine the proposal for review at future GV season ten. And the basis for this recommendation is city code section thirty-one sixteen eleven standard for alteration, numbers one, two, three, four, five, nine, ten, eleven, twelve. City code section thirty-one sixteen and twelve standard for destruction. A, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, J, K, L, M, N. And, um, city code section thirty-one sixteen and fourteen standard for demolition. And the German Village Guidelines on additions.
Anything else to add?
So this is sort of a pre-conceptual application, so you know, I, I design, you spend so much time designing these projects, and then you come in and you're like, you can't do that, so this is a this is to try to mitigate that, so before I spend all the time developing a design that the owners love and then come in and say, well, you can't take the porch down. I was hoping to get some initial feedback on where everyone's heads were at regarding the porch and to get some information on the porch. That way, if we're gonna keep the porch, then I know I need to design the addition around it. Um, so that, so I, I imagine I'll be back twice again for this project, um, you know, a, 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 a real conceptual application with plans and, and real elevations and then uh, and then the final.
So what the conceptual report?
It, it's just, you know, when you. It, it's just, you know, when you, I had submitted kind of a site plan and photographs originally, it was like, well, we need elevations, and we need plans, and like, well, why do I need that in order to get feedback on, on how you feel about the porch?
Right, uh, so, commission, uh, feedback on the cost of taking the porch off?
Do we know how much of that porch, like, the age of the different elements of the porch I was trained in?
So, looking at the previous COAs, kinda walk ourselves back through those, the very last page of the application, uh, is a photo from two thousand. Showing that there was a porch up there at one time. Uh, looks like in two thousand and, it's oh, two or three, there's one from ninety eight. Replacing the lower deck toning groove, replace lower railing, spindles, replace upper deck plywood. So, it looks like there's a deck up there already by ninety eight. Sanborn's show. Porch, open porch, one floor, so the deck is probably put on sometime between sixty one and ninety eight.
Doesn't look like any of it's original, though.
Yes, the question is, eh, first step is, is, is it feasibly original? So, looking at this data, if we actually have, it appears that a porch of some sort was there since the sixties. The deck on top of the porch is probably a piece that came on, it's probably somewhere eighties or later, I'm guessing. The next question is, with all the alterations and changes potentially happened, is there enough of the historic structure left to consider it historically contributing, or do we believe that it could go away?
So, I don't wanna say this, okay, whether it's new, new material or old material, conceptually, there's always been a porch there, whether it's been one story or two stories. And I'm looking at the door to the upper level, and it potentially could be an addition, that the door was added, I'm not sure. Looking at the headers lower, but it's full header, which is kind of interesting. Um, anyway, so, historically, when people wanted to put an addition in the back of a house like this, the porch has been lost. And thinking that's kind of worn out.
So, what is, what are you saying?
It's on the back of the house. Um, if you say they have to maintain the porch, there's absolutely no viable way that they can go out two story, on the back of that house with an addition.
Yeah.
And keep, so, and we just, we've never said none of this, you know?
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm just, I appreciate you bringing it up. Just not, I'm not, being a advocate for myself here, trying to figure out only time we're gonna see it. It's not the house, is it?
Yeah, you know, yeah, maybe, cause that, that, that's apartment store.
There's, it's one end from that one.
Yeah, okay.
So, I, I don't think it's gonna be visible from the public way. Not really through there, through the tree potentially, but, yeah, I don't, I don't see.
We, we have lots of these on the back of houses like this, that the porches were lost.
Yeah. I, I don't think it's contributing enough, my opinion, so.
Prevent an addition, I agree. Is that what you needed to know?
Yes, that makes me feel so much better.
I would say that, um, so, my question is, what's going on with the back door, is that recessed back in and got a column down on the sliding dozen?
Yeah, you know, to be honest, because they said, oh, you have to submit elevations, I kind of just copied and pasted this from another German Village project years ago. So, again, that's why it's gonna come back for conceptual review again with a, with an actual design.
Okay, but you got the answer, I think, I, I think we're all in agreement on that?
Yeah.
I would say, this is not one of the sister houses. But it's very similar competition.
It's a, it's a standard force car.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think I'm, all that I'm curious about is where the chimney went to in the front, the best. Not part of this, but, these houses oddly had the chimney in the center of that door.
This is a duplex, was this a duplex original?
Not that I'm aware of, but.
Maybe, see the chimney, chimney had been on the side of this slide. And this house was a duplex, it's a single now, it's a big deal with it.
Top and bottom?
There you go.
It was a duplex?
No.
Oh.
Still noise, still got your chimneys.
Okay.
Yeah, the house to you, to the south of you, um, is a duplex. It's a duplex, they got a chimney down the center, right up, right in the center of the door, if you look up at the door windows, you see the chimney there, which is odd. But it's not atypical for duplexes, so. Sorry, just work.
It's great.
We fret our chimneys.
Would you do put the addition on, put the addition on? Probably one of the things we're gonna consider is attaching there, we've got the window headers pretty up high underneath
Yeah.
of the gutter line, that's gonna be a hard attachment to make, so, it's gonna be one of our primary things to look at when you come back with it.
You mean like, if, if we're tucking a flat roof under that existing soffit?
Yeah, how do you get under that soffit, how do you construct that, how do you waterproof it, how do you do, how do you make that work? Up under there, you only get, what, two, three, maybe four courses of brick?
Yeah.
So, how that structure all comes together is gonna be
Okay.
rocky, and then we see plans, looking at plans, don't wanna see blowing out entire backside of houses and brick structures.
Okay.
The tenants of preservation is, in the future, if somebody wanted to take the house back to original form, they should be able to, caveat is, once it becomes interior space, it's out of purview, but we look at plans and we see that load of that wall, we got pause.
Okay, okay.
We've had some that have just been way too much.
That's kind of the trend right now, right, is you, you kind of take, they, the owners wanna take the whole back wall out and make it open space. Luckily, what they're, um, hoping to gain, like a mudroom, laundry room, that we can maintain most of that.
Yeah.
Most of that wall.
Looking at.
Definitely at the second floor, we're just kind of adding bathrooms.
Look at the National Preservation Standards out of the Secretary of the Interior, there is specific talk about trying to reuse existing openings, not, not be new openings, not opening up back walls, that kind of stuff, so there's a, a national standard of, of design principles towards that.
Okay.
But, again, once it's inside the building, enclosed fully, it's not in the commission's view.
Okay.
But we'll be looking for that, the, the, first pass through will look for it. Uh, alright, so conceptual, no action necessary, uh, anything?
I'm not leaving because I'm the next case to.
Anything else you want on item twelve?
No.
Good, I have thirteen GV dash two four dash zero four dash zero two three sixty six Thurman.
It's a technical application for new construction. Um, the proposed work description is the new construction of an addition. To construct a new two-story additions to knock the existing two-story structure down. An attached garage and storage case on the first floor, dwelling space on the second floor. And the existing two-story structure is currently in half this space. This application was previously reviewed conceptually in the November twenty twenty three GBC hearing. And the following is taken from the approved November twenty twenty three GBC hearing. Um, commission comments, so that the commission has agreed that the design was inappropriate for the existing structure and for the lot at sixty six thirteen. Commission has commented that the design does not speak to the commission's design of the existing structure. Some commissioners expressed concerns over the proposed design relationship to the existing set in the street. There is a mass void issue for the lot in relation to name properties. Historically, there was a rug yard in the front of the L-shaped structure. A commission has had that the open space should be preserved, as the door on the further back of the L-shaped structure was a significant entrance that should be reserved. The proposed design does not respect the geometry of the building site or retain the building space. The commission suggested to relocate the position to the rear property, set back from the principal structure is along with any addition from the end of the L towards rear property. The commission confirmed that the attached garages are not allowable, however, some commissioners concluded that because the space was historically a measure space, they may be into both of the attached garage, if the garage and the rear aren't accessed through the existing part of the line. But the commission has concluded that there was space for an addition and detached garage in the rear of the property. The commission suggested that parking variance could be obtained from the additional two spaces that the addition of the dwelling would cause. The commission requested a roof plan with the sign company's request for action. The commission expressed concern over the usability of the proposed interior stud in the addition for the proposed design. The commission asked if the existing fence in the front yard was approved, and requested staff check the file. Commission also requested that staff add any historic photos prior to the next review of the application for addition of property. At the April Business Meeting, the commission requested the applicant submit a cell-based elevation drawing for the commission to review, and that HBO staff add any photos or regular COAs from the file. The applicant did submit a new elevation drawing, and HBO staff compiled all the window photos on file, and only COAs with standard repair or replace the like kind for roofings and offices, there is no COA. Staff recommends that the commission offer design feedback that can be utilized by the applicant to further refine the proposal for review at a future GBC meeting. And the basis for this recommendation is city code section thirty one sixteen dot eleven standard for alteration. Numbers one, two, three, four, five, nine, ten, eleven, twelve. City code section thirty one sixteen dot twelve standard for new construction. A, C, D, E, F, G, I, J, F, G, H, I, J, K, L, M, N. The German Village Guidelines of additions, one, two, three, four, five. The German Village Guidelines for new construction, garage and outdoor days. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen.
Anything else to add?
Uh, no, so this was the one where the project violated the L, the sacred L space. So, this is an attempt to kind of push it back into the parking lot and maintain the same functionality for the owner, it's, um, a single car garage at the base. Um, we are showing a second door on the other, on the north side of the garage, um, so they can cycle things, they, she has a classic car that she wants to store, so she can store it in there and then still use the parking spaces for her business. Uh, and she also needs overflow storage for storing, uh, cabinets and things for her, for her business. Um, so, really, this is a hyphen, a two-story hyphen, that basically is just, um, a circulation space, it's an entrance from the parking lot and a stair up to the apartment, and it also connects to the existing building, so we can get the egress out through this new stair and take away the metal exit stair in the courtyard. Um, so, it's same functionality in apartment upstairs and garage below. There are gonna be, um, several variances for the project, obviously, they'll be formally submitted next round. Um, it is a parking reduction because we're not getting the two spaces for the apartment, and we're, the garage is eating up two spaces in the existing parking lot. And there's, we're not meeting the minimum and maximum side yards at that.
What's the zoning on this right now?
So, it's zoned R three, but it has a council variance to be used as a commercial use.
Other for floor?
The whole building.
The whole building?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, it was a long time, I think it was in the nineteen sixties.
So, like, yeah, so what's on slick for now?
Um, she has like offices and storage just kind of spread throughout the entire building. There's a, on the front room, there's a conference room on the storefront on Thurman, and then, I think it's really like material library on the rest of that first floor and that main body, and there's an office adjacent to the new, in the L piece, adjacent to the new addition, on the second floor is just office space.
And again, that's a council variance for what?
To, um, allow for a office use in a residential district.
Good, commercial. I'd like to know exactly what that, and we bought, my, we gotta get a copy of that.
Uh, the zoning people had sent me, uh, the, the, I can forward it to you. They sent me the documentation of it.
Send me that changes the complexion of it, the fact that it's not residential on the second floor. Um, that it is gonna count as variance for being commercial slash business up there and on the first floor. Cause I, I'm looking at, if it was typical Long Livingston, where we had commercial on the first floor and residential on the second. We, this would be, I would consider this an ADU that we're adding.
Oh.
And it's an attached garage, and that's starting to get a little dicey.
Mm-hmm.
But since it is commercial on both floors, I can get here better.
So, looking at the Columbus zoning map, property, it, it's still showing as R two F, it doesn't show having any kind of council variance, which would be presented, that might have been before use was required to have a council variance, so yeah, definitely had a documentation.
Yeah, like I said, it was like back in the nineteen sixties or seventies, that, that they got.
That's gonna be essential for us, goodness.
Would that even show?
Uh, so, there's this across the way, they, they have council variance, so all the stuff that's been getting the, much on the first floor lately, the last ten years is getting put into the, into the map. I don't know if the historical stuff is put in there or not, so. So, yeah, if it's R two, R two F versus R three versus capital variances.
Yeah, we need to know.
Yeah.
That's, that's gonna be, for me, that's gonna be a big part of this.
Okay.
The Sanborns don't show anything in that L space, I just wanna double check that, make sure, I went back nineteen oh one, there's nothing there, it's this, this structure, it showed a, a, an auxiliary structure in the, uh, the back northeast corner. Uh, little one-story utilitarian building in the north, in the northeast corner, that's the only thing that's on the site, so.
Okay.
It used to be an alley, like we talked about last time, that.
Yeah, that alley is used by the property at the north.
Be safe. Yeah, yeah. And historically, the front portion of the L was shop, two floors, and the back portion, rectangular running out to see the park, was the two-story dwelling, so it's always been a dwelling slash shop. Or is increasing the shop and then trying to head back to?
And decreasing the parking.
Yeah. And I would, I would make the statement that just from driving around this area, this is just personal perspective, uh, parking on the street doesn't seem to be egregious. Uh, particularly because once you turn Thurman and head west, it's basically commercial on one side. You got a couple spots right there. And along Thurman, there's a park, Thurman, and again, that big commercial structure, big parking lot across Thurman. I don't think the parking demand is heavy every time I drive past this area. Which is fucking.
And her use doesn't have, I think she has one employee, and then she can park in the garage, and then, you know, if she does have a guest come, there's still two available parking spaces.
Is that all her business, or does she rent out to tenants?
It's all her business.
Okay.
And, uh, looking at that door there, the stairs go away, the need for a door goes away. It'd be nice when you come for the application, we could get some better photos of the upper door. From this photo, it looks like there might be some brick patching work, which may indicate that it used to be a window up there.
Oh, okay, okay.
So, taking it back to a window might be appropriate.
Okay.
The door goes away, but with the open there, the. But with open there, a full height window is preferred. After they get built in, but.
You know. And here's my first moment. I, I think the connector is so big. I don't think it needs to be that big. For what it's doing.
So here's what I asked my colleagues the other day. Okay, so this is zoned residential, but it's a commercial use. So now does my stair, I think my stair needs to meet commercial standards. You know, I'm seven eleven.
Maybe grow standard, yeah.
Yeah, um. So, yeah, I mean, it, yeah, maybe there's a way to make it smaller, but those stairs take up a lot of room and you have to be able to kind of cycle past them.
The width of the foyer you've got in there. And, and I'll, I'll, I'll tell you what, the reason I'm, I'm chewing over this. And it's not going to talk for me, but it's, it's, um, this is big. It's almost, you know, it's a good chunk of garage footage. And if this could be smaller and get into here. And be more integral with this and give some of this awkwardness away.
I think someone.
You can press it down.
I think this is speaking, this is not speaking to our last conceptual, I think we talked about. Does it want to engage the corner or respect the corner? I think that's where this kind of L shape is really speaking from.
But, but I'm saying, I'd like to see this. I'm saying, get, get all this activity in, into here.
Yeah, but then I'm not respecting that, like, the net corner is not going to be maintained.
I was gonna see that corner anyway, once you put a garage in, then you put a.
It, cause I, I still need to get access, I'm trying to use it for egress from the existing second floor also. So I'm, I need enough overlap to get. Second, first floor or second floor?
Second floor. Yeah, I get that. Why can't you use this door, this one instead?
Yeah, if I, if it's okay to overlap.
That, that's the thing. I think it's better to have, these look like two separate things from Thurman. That have this big, huge connector there.
Okay, so get, basically get it out of view from Thurman.
Yeah.
And should, like, keep it on the orange side and not worry about.
Yeah.
Maintaining that corner. Okay.
It gets, get, do whatever you need to do in.
I think that's doable.
In here.
And that I see your point. I think also part of what, what you're going towards is, is getting it towards the, the preservation concept of reuse existing openings, taking a window to a door versus blowing a new door into the virgin brick beside.
I, 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 I can run with the zoning and find that. I can do with this, I can do with this. But I think if you can get this piece in here.
Yeah.
And get this back out, out of mix, I think you'd do better. I, I just think that there's a lot of, for what this needs to do, it's a, it's a connection or into the garage, it's a connection up here. But this, I think this stair could get smaller, then your square footage for your board could get smaller. And you could work something in here and go that way or something, but I think you could get something.
Okay, yeah, I, I think it's worth a shot.
And this, and I don't know how you're gonna do it, but yeah, that's.
That's.
But I, I think that's.
That's in my court, right?
This avenue here and get it mixed.
Yeah, so I'm probably gonna push the, I've got a little bit of space. I can push the garage.
That's why I wonder, yeah.
They're up, and so I'll do that to get a little bit more.
That's not a, yeah, use it.
Yeah, okay.
And I know that your, your zoning variance is calling for a, uh, I guess the minnow setbacks five, probably three.
I was gonna push it up to three.
Yeah.
So it gives you an extra foot, one foot four.
Usually if you go beyond three, they make you get a maintenance easement. You know, so you can get on the other person's property to maintain your, that side of the building.
So who makes you do that?
Building department.
Building is?
Yeah, the zoning, yeah.
Yeah, we don't hear, we don't hear anything about that. Yeah.
So I'll put it up to three feet and then reconfigure that to what I can come up with.
Yeah, this, even if it means making the garage a little deeper to make whatever, you know?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, it, it'll be an interesting intersection of how that piece is gonna, I don't think the, I think that stair element. I, I just, I'm gonna see what I come up with. Yeah, yeah.
I mean, I, I bet, to be honest with you, they can disagree. Like, you've got a footprint for the garage.
Mm-hmm.
If this pushing laws surrounds means that you need to change that second floor footprint or it's bigger than the garage and hangs out over the front.
Mm-hmm.
I have no problem with that either.
Okay, okay.
I think that, trying to talk myself into that concept, I think they pressed it in some of the old, I'd say barn style design.
Yeah.
You make it really utilitarian, kind of that accessory barns.
Mm-hmm.
Carriage, not carriage house, that's a different connotation nowadays.
Yeah.
But traditional purpose to have, a lot of those overhangs were there for hauling up things because.
Right, right.
Take some of that language.
So I think there's some square footage you could pick up that way too.
Okay.
Because it probably, if you grow that first one too much, you end up cutting into that back.
More parking.
Yeah, but I, I have no problem with the second floor getting bigger. It needs to.
I don't know, it just bothers me that we're chewing up so much of the site when it's under parked. And I keep looking at it and unfortunately the curb cut is where it is. Because if that curb cut just slid, you could actually parallel against the back of the office and at least pick up a, you know, a fourth.
Yeah, I don't think you have enough maneuvering for the, I spent a lot of time tinkering on parking and maneuvering.
Curb cut is.
Well, no, you need twenty feet clear between that, you know, your back in or, in order to back out. And there's not, once I get that, that parking space requirement, I think is nine feet when you're parallel parking. And so I can't do, there's not enough, there's not nine feet, twenty feet.
Nine by eighteen. And then you can, you can do another eighteen to twenty behind it to maneuver. But I, I doubt that.
Yeah, I don't think, I think, I don't think I have quite enough space.
Because we don't want to open that can of worms.
Yeah.
Yeah, the only, I'd say, potential value of moving the curb cut is you're having old alley right now on the north side of that lot, which is now a driveway for the adjacent property. So there's really no, there's no true long-term parking space north of that current curb cut.
Do you know the status of that alley is?
It just is being used by the nor, you mean like if it is in an abandoned alley or did someone buy it? I have no idea.
Still public right of way. And can you use?
I can, I can ask zoning.
It would be good to know, it may help you.
The, the Sanborns do show that alley as an L-shaped alley running across the north side of this property and the adjacent property to the east. And then at the, at that property's eastern border, it turns north.
Oh.
Property above you is two doubles, two, two express doubles.
Mm-hmm.
It basically islands those two properties and it dies out into the eighteen-foot alley beyond that.
Interesting.
But if it was never, was vacated by the city, that's one question. If it was just never claimed by the city, that could be a question.
Mm-hmm.
Just be, if they've been using it as their property for a long period of time. There may be that whole swat rights kind of stuff.
Right, right.
Or you may only have a bit.
Yeah, I was gonna say if it was abandoned, you ought to have.
You never know if there was a neighbor agreement way back in the day that was like, oh, I'll just put my fence here and you can use that.
Yeah, I, I would find out.
And for your lot coverage as too, um, because that's potentially an alley that would give you, you get half that alley as part of your lot, your lot total as well. When you pull down your block coverage.
Yeah, I'm not running up against the lot coverage issue.
No, yeah.
That might also give you ability to go even further north with the footprint. Cause if you have that as part of your property, if that's a ten-foot wide alley, it's five more feet of property.
Yeah.
That you could.
I don't know if she, you know, how many feathers she wants to ruffle. She's already, you know, ruffling some feathers with this, so.
But if you do find out that if you have the alley, you could use that five feet as your buffer.
Yeah.
Have to claim it. You don't have to try to take.
No.
It just goes.
Right.
Slam that garage all the way north.
Yeah, we can get, take, basically put the wall where the fence is and, and we still have the set.
Yeah.
Okay, that's.
And essentially it doesn't change anything for the neighbors.
Exactly, yeah.
Playing the game to get your.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Yeah.
All right, all right. So I will re-submit with a new design with the connector to the north. So we're just seeing a simple volume from Thurman. See how that goes.
Tell back here. The question. There's potential.
I'll see what I find out. Okay, anything else?
What, what was this showing?
Be good, okay.
Good, yeah.
All right, um. Agenda. Don't see the other applicant from the floor, so we'll keep on going past that. Way to the bottom, uh, this is, uh, we got two. We've got, uh, two seventy-five Lear Street. New business, G V dash two four dash oh four dash oh two five, two seventy-five Lear.
Yes, you did put the applicant.
Okay.
It's still missing.
Came and left.
So, um, I'm not sure if this is back.
I, I'll open this up to the commission if you wanted to hear this one real quick. Uh, it's basically a large tree dying in a parking lot. Basically roots got, it's too big for where your position is in. Um, I had staff go back and look at the history of the property. And there's two other trees in the past that were taken down for similar conditions.
In that same.
Same parking lot, two different.
Two, oh, two other spots.
It looked like the overhead from Google was dead.
Yeah, so.
I mean, completely dead.
So I would say, I don't think we need the applicant here per se. We want to take a look at it real quick and make a determination. I can read it in, take a look at it.
Yeah, if it's dead, I don't have a problem getting, getting rid of it.
Sure.
Can be hazardous.
They propose a, a replacement tree. Do you want to do a replacement tree?
I can search it up.
I think the thing that we should look at though, it is a twenty-inch tree, you know, that's coming down. I don't know that it's.
Let me read it in real quick, so we can have a conversation and then continue it. Uh, G V dash two four dash oh four dash oh two five, two seventy-five Lear Street. Read it real quick.
Absolutely. Um, this is on the new business and a request for action for landscaping. To remove a twenty-inch London plane tree in the parking area. And plans a Japanese lilac tree as a replacement tree in the exact same location as the removed London plane tree. Step analysis, HBO staff added this as a new business item to the April agenda. Because the owner specified that the existing tree currently poses a risk to life and safety. The application was added after the April business meeting, so there was no business feedback. Um, I'll just add in that I have included the C O A from twenty fourteen for the tree removal, similar conditions. Um, if you, if we can go back on the aerials on Caesar or something like that. You can see those two large trees in the courtyards of the, the interior courtyard points of the property. Um, so staff recommends approval with any of all qualifications to be, if it's HBO staff for immune approval, right, issuing some specific. Um, with the following condition. The staff recommended condition is for a new tree to be planted in the same horizontal location. And the basis for this recommendation is city code section thirty one sixteen dot thirteen, standard site improvements, A.
I, I've got no problem with a current tree coming down. I think it's what goes back.
Well, so where do we stand in the city with replacement of caliber size trees and? Cause wasn't that the? I know it was being considered that I thought it was replacement like for like a caliber, you obviously can't put in a twenty-inch caliber tree. So then that becomes four, four smaller trees or, you know, three smaller trees type issue.
Cool.
Yeah. And I don't know where the city stands with that right now. With the tree reports and, you know, the tree plan.
I think I found the code section, um.
I think it's being updated.
That's University District. I know there's a requirement for trees in parking lots. Then it was like standard landscaping.
Yeah, it's usually either based on the square footage or. Because that property has along Sixth Street at the end of the parking lot. There is a landscape area that could have a tree that does not. There's a sycamore on, um, city on Sixth Street at the south edge of that parking lot. And then there's another hedged landscape area that could receive a tree. So they could put back two trees at least. That's the tree that they're saying now is dead, correct?
I believe so.
So chapter three, three, one, two, dot two, one, landscaping and screening. Interior, any parking lot containing ten parking spaces or more, not a structure should be landscaped. One shade tree for every ten parking spaces or fraction thereof. It should conform to two inches of caliber at a time of planting minimum. In Highland, Kansas, daily minimum soil area of one hundred forty-five square feet per tree. Suitable soil volume. Cover the vegetation in gravel, log, and mulch. In addition to the, the interior landscaping tree, you shall be in addition to any required front, side, or rear yard uh, of any screened area. Informationary search for curving materials to minimize damage to trunks and routes with vehicles. So I think the only thing right now is, there's nothing about replacement trees in this section, but there is tree requirements.
Well, I know the city was reviewing based on, you know, the tree report and the idea that if trees came down, that there would be a replacement value assigned to that tree. And you can't, you know, you, the, the biggest you would ever put in is a six inch. You're probably likely maybe a five, four would be more typical, or three. I mean, if you went out and bought it in Oakland or something, you know, you'd buy a two and a half inch caliber tree probably. But I think what should go back in, in that spot, because that's that's probably eighteen feet off the building for more.
It's a pretty big tree, yeah.
Yeah, we're taking, you know, we're taking down a big tree and a Japanese tree lilac is a small ornamental tree. It's not a shade tree.
But I think if you look at the, if you look at the arborist notes, the problem is though it's been, I forget where it says, basically dying by, by drought over time. So was that tree even appropriate to plant there in the first place?
Sycamore, London plane trees are urban trees. We've got all over downtown, very small growing areas at one of the toughest trees you could put in.
I'm not buying that as the reason to treat.
Yeah.
That's something.
Lasted and.
Just old.
Yeah, and it's also planted, you know, back closer to the building. It should have been centered at least in that spot.
They paved out.
Yeah.
With pay, papers, and others, instead of keeping the whole thing. Or.
Yeah. So it hasn't received the ground conditions that it should have.
We just don't know though, what the requirements are for replacing the tree other than one tree per ten parking spaces.
One shade tree per ten.
Yeah.
So I think, I think the commission is not opposed to taking the tree down that's there. But approval hinges upon what's getting replaced. You don't agree on what's proposed or placed with. So in my opinion, this is a continued application, but we've got some feedback for the applicants.
Does it say shade tree in there?
Yeah, zoning code specifically says.
Shade tree, okay, yeah, for parking lot.
Yeah.
Not so much on wants, but.
In the last piece, that's section thirty-three point one, two, point two, one, uh, E states that they shall be maintained and comply with original site plan. I was hoping that they had an original site plan in the applications, but.
I did not find the site. The original site. The original site plan was seventies, so.
I would say probably reach out to the Jira Society, see if they have it in their house files. They might have a copy of it, or the applicant property owner, they have a copy of it maybe. But. But I think we can all agree that that tree, tree's been there for a long time, pipe brothers have planned.
Mm-hmm.
So something, a shade tree has to go back.
But it, there's buildings built in seventies. Seem like it to be.
Yeah, me too, I agree.
Uh, I didn't see in the, the version I downloaded, because I downloaded before and just put it in there. Um, when was the last COA that took one down?
The last COA was 2014.
2014.
And it's only two trees that were in the interior courtyards. Um, they were very big trees, I'm not sure what the species of COA specifies. But, uh, it looked like they were very small planting areas. From the aerial views, as you can still see with the planting areas, all that now been filled with them.
Because, because looking at that aerial photo from the applications in there currently, um, to the left of this island, another island, small tree.
Very small tree.
If that was one of the 2014 replacements, then over the course of 2014, now 10 years, if that's as big as that thing grew from two-inch caliber or larger, he's bigger. So.
Knowing what I know, I agree with Karen, it's six.
All right, so, uh, is there a motion to continue the application?
Oh, Mr. Schimman, I don't. GV 2404 dash oh two five two seven five Lear Street, I move to continue.
Do you have a second?
Second.
We've got a second dealer's choice. Uh, any questions, motion? All those in favor? Aye, yes. Ayes have it, motion passes. All right, on to old business, sorry for keeping you. Uh, GV dash two four dash oh four dash oh two four, multiple locations.
I think I should keep my spell since I worked on the original project.
So are you here to, to speak on it or are you here as an applicant?
I am here to represent the project.
All right, I have a seat up front here. And one for settle, if you raise your right hand. You should tell the truth, full truth, not the truth.
I do.
Your name?
John Purle.
Thank you very much.
Today, it's not for a new design. Um, the proposed website description is German Village Intensive signage trail. The applicant seeks preliminary feedback renewing the German Village Intensive signage trail project. GVC approved the first set of signs in 2017, which was GV dash one seven dash one zero dash two one on the sign size in 2018, which was GV dash one eight dash three dash seven. In 2019, the G, uh, the GVC approved the second set of signs, which was GV dash 19 dash three dash two two. The following is from the approved March 2019 GVC hearing minutes. And that is just the, I believe, the approval for the sentence of signs. So at the April business meeting, the commission requested that the applicant clarify the current scope of work for their new proposal, refine photos of the installed signs from 2017 to 2018. The commission also requested staff identify the previous approvals, the artwork signs. The art, the, um, artwork signs, which are 28 signs, were endorsed by the commission in 2011 and installed by Columbus Public Health. Always be installed on existing poles with the exception of four locations. Forty Stewart Avenue, 1069 Y Street, um, 117 East Central Avenue, and 280 East 40th Street. At the time of approval, there was no time restriction placed on the signs. Uh, staff recommendation is that staff recommends the commission of the sign be verified if the meeting is live by the applicant to further refine the proposal for review at a future GVC meeting. And the basis for this recommendation is City Council Section 3116, the 13, sensitive site improvements. Um, A and C. And the German Village guidelines, designing considerations, guidelines for graphics and signage.
Quick, anything else to add?
We are, um, we have most of the signs done for the second section of the brick line. We will still need to make some minor adjustments based on the easements that we're able to get, the approvals from the property owners. Um, and then there's a third phase of this, which we hope will follow on shortly after that. We're hoping to wrap up the rest of the project in the next year and a half. We've ceased the fundraising efforts for this particular project. The genesis of all this is we had a business in German Village that is now closed. And that business was a sponsor of all these fundraising activities and this, um, uh, brick line, uh, information trail. So what we need to know kind of is, what kind of approval do you need from us going forward? Can we go to staff level approval? Based on, we're still gonna have to get easements and we're gonna have to make a couple of adjust, adjustments to the copy on some of the signs, like the Schwartz Castle sign. We found some inaccuracies, so we're gonna go back and, and re-research and rewrite that sign. Uh, but we know where it's gonna go. Um, and then the third phase is, is SIMA. So the question is, do we need to come back to you for full approval with all the easements in place and all of the property owner approvals in place and the absolute final signs? Or can we take the concepts that we have and the locations that we have approved and go to staff level approval for the project? Sorry, going forward.
I would say that we, we have the precedence of what's been done so far. So I think the, the signage layout, color schemes of signs, I think that's pretty well understood. Um, I think understanding maybe a packet of photos of the properties and where on the property we tend to put them. Is it property A on the fence here, or property B on the building here? Uh, just kind of a flip book of those things, it could just be a square on the building where you want to place it. Um, to me, I think that's acceptable. I'm not concerned with the content of the text and everything else. Uh, we're, I'm more concerned of the visual placement, the impact, is it gonna be causing damage to a store's fabric or impeding the visibility of something, store feature, that kind of thing. I'd say that the only real think up that we've had, if I'm wrong, uh, was the, the double signage on the property across Lindy's, that's the only one I think we got heartburn over. Um, one sign per, per property, um, I think that's.
Popular corner.
Yeah.
Lots going on there.
Yeah, so that's, that's, I don't think I need, and personally I don't, I don't need the easement documentation. Uh, and statement from the homeowner saying that we're good with this being property and you can work out easement stuff beyond that.
Great.
Any disagreements there?
Yeah, no, I, 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 general concept is all I think that I'm interested in as a commissioner. Copy is not it, that they, I'm interested that the signage matches what you've already done.
It's, there's no fore, changes foreseen, it's all gonna be the same program.
And just an understanding of how they're being mounted. After that, I don't like here where you're putting them.
And the mounting was dictated in an earlier, before we did the first round of signs, we were, you know, dictated by that. In fact, we took two of them down at Frank Fetch Park when they had to take the pillars down to do some repairs in the park. And then when they reestablished the pillars, they reinstalled the signs, same places, same holes.
That makes sense. I think that's all that I'm worried about.
So I think Ned, Ned's looking for less than I am.
Yeah.
So I think somewhere along.
But not with yours, go with, what you're asking.
Yeah, we're, we're excited to finish up the project.
Yeah, that's all.
Excellent, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. So you just need to go back to the one, go back.
Number seven.
Seven GV dash twenty four dash oh four, dash zero one seven, five forty, South Fifth Street, is their motion to continue the application.
I salute.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Against, ayes have it, motion passes.
Take a care, Karen, she's got from that.
Yes, she did. Just going to. Uh, that's then the agenda, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Yeah, second, question, motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Against, too bad.
Karen says no.
Great. Um, don't really have enough people here for the, um.